No public participation. We're just going to be hearing from department heads about some of the larger items within their budget, and Steve, I'm sure, will guide the conversation. And then do question and answer session. This is a chance for the city council to get a better grasp of the budget as we work, as we move to decide the funding for next year. So, that being said, this is a workshop. I don't think there's anything else to start with. The mayor is on vacation, and I hate her. So, let's go.
Right, so I just wanted to say, this is the council's first opportunity to interact with the department managers directly. Hopefully, they'll use, you'll use that opportunity to, for that interaction, to be less focused on the numbers and more on their operations, changes year over year, what the capital needs are. And then you can, from there, set your priorities and direct back to us where you would like to see changes going forward in the future. As far as tonight's presentation, each department will be, if we can pull the presentation up here, go to the second slide. Each department will be reporting out on what's changed for fiscal year 25. They'll give you a statement, sort of what's been going on for the year, the major initiatives that are encompassed within the budget, any specifics on the capital program, and if they have, again, a part two, you know, a new position or such under that, they'll present on that as well. So with that, we have an order. You have an agenda. That's the order of presentations tonight. So we're going to try to follow up on that. I've asked the department managers to, we'll keep one up on deck over here on the table, so that we can flow through as quickly as possible to aid in tonight's presentation. So with that being said, I'll take the first slide. It's administration. There we go. So the council has hard copies of this. As far as administration, that encompasses the finance, two positions within finance, two positions within my office in communications, and community development. So in there, for this year, the council is, again, reexamining community development versus the assistant city manager, looking at the history there. That goes back to 2016. There was a review on community development versus an assistant city manager as far back as that. At that time, the decision was made to stay with the community development position. That's what was hired and put forward and has come forward with the land bank operations, dangerous and hazardous, as well as other projects administration. So under consideration is an assistant city manager position. The job description would have a focus on special projects, personnel, and acting in lieu of the manager. What we've not been able to ferret out yet is not all of the elements of community development can get covered under that job description, nor within the manner it was presented. So that's still on for discussion. It's about half of the dollar change in administration this year. I also wanted to point out that our finance department is only comprised of two people, but on the fourth floor, HR has four personnel within that department, and that departmental staff is cross-trained over into finance now to give us more continuity and coverage during vacations and/or other outages. So we have an individual that's cross-trained now into payables and purchase orders, which is significant for us, because we've never had that type of coverage before. So just wanted to give you the indication, we're continuously cross-training and providing for continuity, as well as being able to cover ourselves moving forward. Any questions on administration? Okay. Stacy, I'll turn it to you.
Okay, let me know. I'll make sure it's on. I'm sorry. So as far as the human resources department goes, there's no staffing changes requested. We didn't ask for any increase or changes in the budget. We currently have four full-time positions budgeted. One that Steve just mentioned is cross-training with the finance department as well. So we go back and forth between them, and we've worked out a schedule that works between all of us. We are cross-training constantly within the department for making sure the operations stay going, that if somebody's out on vacation or whatever, payroll is done, or any of the HR duties are taken care of. Citywide positions, we have 213 positions in total. That does not include seasonal on-call temporary positions. That are, those are our permanent positions. We have 199 full-time positions and four part-time positions. The part-time positions are 20 hours a week. We have 12 vacant positions currently, which is 5.63% of the positions in total, again, not including seasonal on-call or temporary. As far as the vacancies, we have one code enforcement officer, which is a new vacancy. It was just reposted. We have a city engineer, a mechanic two in public works, an EO four in public works, three equipment operator one in public works, a firefighter, two dispatchers, and two non-certified police officers. Of those, the city engineer, the mechanic, the equipment operator, four equipment operator one, and dispatcher have been scheduled in the next couple of weeks.
Stacy, can I, can I interrupt you there? So part of this examination was, are there positions that might reasonably not be able to be fulfilled this year, so that's an opportunity to not fund them? My answer to that would be, I don't see that opportunity here, this, in this list.
No, no, these are needed positions. And I would agree. They're very needed positions. Of them, compared to other municipalities, we actually are doing very well in terms of hiring. There are other municipalities out there that are significantly down in the police department, dispatch department, fire department. So Sanford is actually in a decent spot. Retaining is probably the biggest challenge that we're having, is the turnover. This can be determined on a number of different things. It can be on work conditions, benefits, mental health, work-life balance. The biggest thing that I'm finding is, years ago, you used to have, people would stay in positions for years, years and years. It was nothing to stay 10, 15, 20 years, and you'd have a lot of longevity. Now we're finding that a lot of people are hopping, job hopping. They hop for benefits. So it's very common to see people stay for a year or two, and then they leave. So that's our hardest part, is we're constantly refilling these positions that we've already filled, that years ago, you never had that. And they're doing for all different things, all different reasons. A huge thing is the work-life balance. They want to see, you know, the home positions. We don't have those. We're not, we're front-facing positions. So it's very hard. We can't offer those benefits. So we have to get a little unique and challenging, figuring these challenges on how we fill and how we retain our employees. One of the comparisons is from 2013 to 2023. In 2013, we had, we had hired 13 new hires that year. In '23, we hired 38 new hires, which, you know, doesn't sound like a lot, but when you say there's 52 weeks out of the year, and you have 38 new hires in that year, it is a lot. And that doesn't include seasonal on-call or temporary hires, which can add another 75 to 100 additional hires a year. So it's, hiring's a huge part. We're very busy with hiring, and we do our best, but it's a challenge. It's a constant challenge. And a lot of the changing in the hiring patterns have happened since COVID. We're finding a lot, that's where we noticed the real big change and uptake in it, is since COVID. A couple of different things. One of the things that I was asked to report on was the organizational charts and the staffing specifically for fire, police, and public works. Right now, for the fire department, they have one chief, two assistant chiefs, administrative and operations, one executive assistant, four captains, eight lieutenants, 38 firefighters, one which is this one vacancy due to retirement in December of 2023. We're holding off on posting that right now, currently, waiting for, hoping to get some graduates out of the Vog Center. So we figured if we hold off for a little bit, it would be better to do the new posting probably in another couple of months. We have four shifts covering two stations, Central and Springville Station. Right now, there's authorized for 50 firefighter medics, covering two shifts at 13 and two shifts at 12. And then the next thing that I have is the organizational chart for the fire department. So we do have that, showing the breakdown that I just discussed. Police department, there's 49 positions, two which are vacant, working three shifts along with the MHU, CID, MDEA, traffic officer, the SROs, the ACO, and court officer. They also have six crossing guards that fall under their budget. They have one chief, one deputy chief, two majors for operations and support and logistics, one professional development and property evidence employee, one executive assistant, one mental health first responder, one administrative assistant, a window clerk, four lieutenants, four sergeants, 21 patrol officers with two vacancies, one traffic enforcement officer, three CID investigators, two MDEA officers, one community outreach officer, two school resource officers, a court officer, and an animal control officer. And then their organizational chart. The next would be public works, the organizational chart and staffing for them. They have 27 positions, six which are vacant, working in four divisions, the highway, the transfer station, municipal garage, and engineering. They have a director of public works, a deputy director of public works, two assistant engineers, one for plan review, one for construction. The construction one is a vacancy right now. We have one executive assistant, one administrative assistant, two working foremen, one for highway, one for transfer station, their EO5s, one garage maintenance foreman, two equipment operator fours for highway, one is a vacancy, two equipment operator threes for highway, eight equipment, eight equipment operator ones for highway, where there are three vacancies, one tractor trailer driver for the transfer station, one transfer station attendant, which is an EO1, three mechanic twos, which is, there's one vacancy there, and a mechanic helper. Part of the issue with the vacancies with public works revolves around their commercial driver's license. It's very hard. The training is expensive. It's very lengthy. With the new laws and rules that came out, it made it even more difficult. And then also, because of the federal laws that surround your licenses, you can't have any marijuana use. There is drug testing. So that, again, creates an additional issue, because you can't use marijuana at all. And where it's legal in Maine, and not in federal, it's an issue. And then there's the public works organizational chart.
I also point out, Stacy, that for each one of those vacancies in public works, that's a plow route that we're down. So when they're doing storm response, you know, they can, they can adjust their schedules and such for other operations in between storms. When they're doing winter response, that's a plow route that's down for every person that we're missing. So that's the public to bear, bear with us in that regard, but it's a difficult task. So those individuals are plowing longer, because they're doing, you know, more than one, one route in there. So it's, it's a continuous problem to have that number of vacancies in our public works department.
One of the things that I did miss, I'm sorry, in a previous slide, I apologize, Larissa, was the overview, a little bit of HR department operations. I was asked to include what our department, some of the things that we do. We support 20 departments. We're in charge of hiring, payroll, income protection, workers' comp claims, FML paperwork, open enrollment for health and dental, W2s, 1095s, contractual salary changes, union negotiations, market analysis, salary surveys, policy development and updates, audits, citywide training, processing, retirements, terminations, promotions, sick buyouts, health stipends, and job description updates. I could go into a lot more detail on those, but I don't want to bore you and be up here. We're trying to get other people. But if you have any questions.
Stacy, sorry, I'm far away. I have too much stuff on my. Stacy, we had added one of the HR positions, I think, 21, 22 fiscal year, in response to the increase in HR demand, I think with COVID, that you mentioned. Do you feel like that position is still extremely, I mean, you have a lot of volume discussed. It's still a necessary?
The, the volume has increased tremendously in our department with, when it was originally added in as a part-time, and then it went full-time, which, thank you for that very much. It was originally brought in because of COVID and all the issues with COVID. That directly transferred to hiring issues and all that. From there, that person does all of our backgrounds. They do, they're basically, their title is HR generalist, but it's really kind of like my administrative assistant. That person does all my letters that go out. We do all the letters. She does all my scheduling for all the interviews. She can, puts all the packets together for the interview packets. She does all of our filing, and she is also the person that was cross-training with finance right now. So she is the one, she's learning payroll, to be back up on payroll. She assists and does all the first report of injuries for workers' comp and the claims on that. She enters all the checks into our spreadsheets. She does all our month-end reports into the spreadsheets for that for us. She is literally a backup in anywhere we need, and I can't say she, she's amazing on what she does. She never complains. She's here. She's punctual. She's prompt. She does whatever we ask her to do, and we asked her to cross-train in accounts payable, and she stepped in on it. So she helps pull stuff for the auditors.
So it's become a really necessary position?
It is a very necessary position. I think I would probably walk out the door, to be honest, if I didn't have her. Just being, we're, we're busy. We're extremely busy, and every position in our department is needed. I value, I understand the difficulty you guys have before you with the budget process. I don't take it lightly, and I don't come and ask for things unless I feel they're very, very needed. And when I came, that position was needed, and it's still needed.
Thank you. And I'm not even sure you asked for it.
I did, originally. Originally, I did. I put it in there as a part-time, and then when it became full-time, I asked for it. It was cut, and then you guys graciously put it back in.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to what Stacy said. We have struggled to get more help upstairs for quite a while, and to have somebody cross-trained is super important. So she's totally cross-trained on purchase recs, purchase orders. She's a month into accounts payable. She'll need a couple more months with accounts payable. But to have that position to fall back on, given that, I said to Steve in the department head meeting that the other day, that five of the six of us are all the same age. We will retire around the same time. You need to have something in place, you know, for that training to take place, and somebody to pick up where we leave off.
And when I started here a dozen years ago, HR was one and a half people. And we never could go back there again. It's unbelievable what's changed in that period of time.
And I was, when I started, I was a half-person. I was 30 hours, part-time. And I'll be honest with you, even at that point, we could see the increase, because very rarely, if you look at my timesheets, the majority of them, I was in there 40 hours a week. I wasn't working 30 hours, because it was just the overload, the workload was there.
I think you're going to find this is a common theme, just so, just so every department head knows. I mean, I look, I've been doing this too long. I look at this budget, and I'm like, I remember when we had to cut that last time, and then we have, we've built back positions we've had to cut in the past, and I'm hopeful we can get through this particular bump in the road without doing that much damage to the, the structure.
It's, you're in a very hard position. It's not going to be easy, and the budget cuts certainly are not easy. And I feel like every position is very vital, and it's very hard. And that's why I said, when you have these vacant positions, they're just as important as well. I don't feel like they can be cut. So I don't have the answers to this, you know, to it, but I don't envy you, any of you, the city manager or the council, in the decisions that have to be made. But I'm here to advocate for my department, and that's what I'm doing, is I'm just telling you, we really utilize and need everybody that's there. I'm not asking for additional. I'm just asking to maintain.
Okay. Thank you. That was very informative. She, she set the base for everyone. So Jamie is up. Jamie and Erin with her-
We're going to start with Erin.
With her snarky little smile, everyone's kind of like.
So I've been tasked with giving an overview of some of the projects that we've completed to date and are ongoing. The first of which is the LD 2003 legislation. As you know, that was statewide legislation aimed at increasing opportunities for housing close to the urban core or growth area of a city with access to water, sewer, and transportation. The progress in Sanford so far is that we've converted the single-family residential zone to residential development zone, along with some minor tweaks to that RD zone regulations. This allows for the up to four units in a growth zone that is mandated by law. We have also updated our existing ordinance for accessory dwelling units, was previously called accessory apartments. But again, Sanford was in good shape in that we had an ordinance to build off of. And then the last item that is required is to pass a ordinance for an affordable housing density bonus, pending approval, and is going to city council next week. So that will round out our, you know, state legislated necessary ordinance updates. Next up for the planning department will be to complete the comprehensive plan, the goals of which are to evaluate current and desired land use and development patterns, to identify natural and historic elements of a community to preserve for the future, and to strategize new policies and action items, and identify funding resources. So ideally, most of the bulk of any new zoning ordinance changes will happen after the acceptance of a comprehensive plan, so that we have the opportunity to discuss things with the public and with the steering committee. Progress on that so far is that we are currently assembling that steering committee. We're doing continuous research and policy review to outline items that need to be discussed, and are contracting a firm for the market analysis, which will drive new policy goals. Brings me to my next step, the market analysis and action plan matrix, the goals of which are to evaluate data and statistics of Sanford compared to the region, to gain an outside perspective on Sanford's opportunities and threats, and to identify necessary changes to land use patterns and policies to reach economic stability and community resilience. Progress on that project is that we published an RFP, a request for proposals, in December, received six responses from qualified firms. A selection committee reviewed the proposals and interviewed the top three candidates, and a recommendation to council is forthcoming next week for the proposed selected consultant to complete that project. That's the first step in the comprehensive planning process.
Yeah, it should be there. Yeah, because the property subcommittee looked at it this morning, so. So is the intern still in this budget, or no?
The intern handle the-
That has, okay. All right, that's, because that's really the major change, other than the reorganization of the monetary. Okay. Jamie?
Thank you. So yes, just a brief update on the reorganization of the planning and codes department. As you guys are aware, the previous planning director retired out last year. I had filled in for their role in the interim of deciding what was going to go on. I believe you guys were impressed with the performance and heard good things, so you decided to make that a permanent position. So you, you promoted me to both the director of codes enforcement, as well as planning. With that change, became a little bit of change to an existing position we had. In the code enforcement world, we had what was called a permit, building permit and safety specialist, that was originally just in the codes office. With the combining of the departments, I felt that that position could be utilized in both worlds. So we, we kind of upgraded that position and included planning activities in it, as well as code enforcement activities. What all of that means is, the planning office is busy enough where we really need another planning-type person in the office. We know that's not feasible, even prior to this year's budget season, even more so in this year's budget season. So what we're trying to do is get creative with existing staff, with existing positions, and, and the reorganization process to continue the same level of service with, with less people. But with that, became, my time is now split between two departments. The permit safety specialist's time is split between two departments, which did leave a huge hole in the code enforcement side of, of customer service. So we were authorized to add an additional code officer to make up for the lost time of myself and the permit safety specialist. We had filled that position. That, that person did decide that code enforcement was not, not for them. So after a couple months of trying, they, they, they did just leave as of last Friday. So Stacy did get the job position posted for us yesterday. We're hopeful that we can get that filled quickly, because the, the workload in both sides is, is still going very, very strong. I know the economy is kind of in limbo right now, and lots of people are concerned about what's going on, but the building permit, the planning world is, is not showing any sign of slowdown.
So the intern would be an assistant to Erin during, for the planning department?
The intern would be primarily in the planning department. We've utilized an intern for the last couple of years. We didn't have to budget for it, because we had extra money in the, in the budget salary line item, so we paid for it without having to ask for additional funds. We, we've been utilizing the intern as a, as a person that does a lot of the backstage stuff. So with all of these worlds, come an immense amount of paperwork, an immense amount of files, immense amount of organization, just a lot of stuff that we don't technically need me or Erin or, or other positions to do, but need to happen. And we have the choice to basically just keep that pile growing and to the rainy day list, or we, we can hire an intern at a fraction of the cost. We can, we can get the work done in a timely fashion, and we can hopefully show a younger generational college student the planning world, and try to maybe get some more interest in, in future people coming into the, into the field. Because, let's face it, there's not a lot of people graduating college looking to become a planner. So if we can spark a little bit of interest, it will help in the future.
Is it something where you do it for, are you doing a semester for someone? Are you doing a summer session? I mean, or is it intended for a full-year internship? How's it?
The last couple of years, it's been basically summer sessions.
Summer sessions. Are you trying to fill, like, maybe one semester, two semester summer? So you have one year-round, maybe?
I mean, I would love to have one year-round. We didn't budget for one year-round. We didn't ask for a year-round one.
I'm not going to give you options.
There's enough work for a year-round person. But again, we're, we knew going into the budget season that it was going to be a rough year. There's lots of contractual stuff that is, is due that really we don't have control over. So again, in a perfect world, I would have asked for a, a full-time intern or a full-time position. That's not realistic. I'm a realistic-type person, so I said, let's, let's try to get a, a summer intern, because the summer is when both sides are the busiest. We don't slow down a lot during the winter, but we slow down a little bit. So it's, again, just trying to use whatever resources might be available. And I understand an intern is not going to be on your top priority list, and it, and it might be cut. I'm hopeful that's not the case, but ultimately, if something has to be cut out of a budget, an intern is probably the first place you're going to look. I understand that. I'm, I'm, I'm going to fight for it, but I'm, I'm not going to die on that mountain.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. It's, I think, as you both know, the comprehensive plan is at the top of our to-do list, because we know it's important to everything else that we need to accomplish. So it's, it's probably potentially a valuable position in this.
And I'm very proud to say we are officially finally started.
Yes, because-
That is very good news.
I know. This guy's really happy. Okay, so questions? Yes, Nate?
Just a quick question. Do we also coordinate with the college to offer college credit with this internship, or is it just a paid internship?
So there's not actually a planning department in the local universities? It's unlikely that we would find a candidate that can qualify for class credit, which is also one of the reasons why it'd be probably good to have a summer intern. We might get someone here for the summer. That's coming up from Boston.
The Mainers use interns extensively, so Nate's quite familiar with the search for good talent that you can use at a cheap cost.
We have had interns before that, that received credits for their work here. They were working under a professor, and they had summer assignments, and they had to complete that, so.
I had a question on the, and I'm sorry, I think I already have to increase my glass number.
Oh, Louise, Louise failed. My sister Louise just went downhill like a stone.
I'm not seeing the intern cost, Steve, on the, or maybe I'm in the wrong spreadsheet, but it's not, it's nominal, correct? So I see reference to the new code enforcement.
2000.
Okay. And then, I, I think it just bears mentioning that our planning department, codes department are more married than ever at this point, and what we're seeing in the budget overall is that significant reduction in the planning department that, to me, is because that marriage between the two departments is offset, you know, the increase in the codes department is offset by that reduction in planning, and there's a net difference of $8,000, I think, which seems pretty nominal between those two departments. So I just thought that bears mentioning.
Can I elaborate on that intern? So, I think I do. Is it, is it on? Yeah. Okay. So this was, thank you. This, this intern last year was, was through my office, and it was actually funded 50% by the governor's office. So it had to have an energy, and it was partly funded through the New England, New England Energy Partnership. So it has to have an energy sustainability focus. So we did have that intern in the, in the code enforcement and planning office for the summer. They helped a lot with filing, which is just an immense task. And they were given some projects. So we've really talked about envisioning this person helping out a lot more with planning. They did some work on the dams, and, and did some research for Erin in that, in that vein, and then did some work on streetlights as well, and some things like that. So that, that's why it's in the budget, is, and I believe it's $3,500, but it's a 50-match with the governor's office. Thanks.
Okay. So are there any other questions for, is this all just, this is codes planning? You did them both at the same time?
This is just planning. I'll come back up for codes.
Okay. Seems like poor planning on Steve's part.
This is the order. The departments are on your list.
No, no, he has a system. We have sheets in order. Hello, Keith. How are you this evening?
Good evening.
Welcome.
I think I can be fairly brief, because I was just in front of you about a week ago to talk about strategic, strategic initiatives that we're going to be doing this year, so I, I won't, I won't go back over all that again. The marketing plan and action, economic development action plan matrix that Erin just mentioned a minute ago is going to be a big part- a minute ago is going to be a big part of what we expect to be doing this coming year. That plan is going to include in it a series of strategic priorities for economic development, and we are expecting that a lot of that is going to come to the growth council, and it's going to be our job to implement, and we're really excited about doing it. So we're excited about that. It's worth noting, and just worth mentioning, that the growth council is a little bit unique in that we are funded primarily through TIF funds. So with the exception of the benefits which are pooled with the rest of the city employees for both administrative ease and also cost savings. But other than that, it's a TIF-funded, TIF-funded 501(c)(6) nonprofit that the city is partnering with. So our staffing is also really simple. There's just the two of us. There's Mary and I, executive director and small business advocate, and we don't anticipate any changes to that, or many changes at all, as far as our budget request this year was going forward. We did put in a little bit extra, I think that was under the equipment line item, that will go into the long-awaited and still anticipated renovation of the former chamber space, which we will be moving into and creating a new conference room and meeting space that will be a community space that we want everybody to use it. I mean, there's organizations that are already talking about being excited about holding their meetings there. So when it's ready, we would love to host other community organizations into that space. But we put a little bit extra in the budget to facilitate also other equipment upgrades and things, rather than putting those which were originally in the construction budget for that space, because we were anticipating to be moving offices up into the front area. We're not doing that anymore. We're going to keep our offices, Mary's in my actual office, right where they are today. So instead, we just take that whole budget, put it into the renovation of that space, and put a little bit extra in there for some of our office equipment upgrades. Other than that, there's really not any substantial change at all to our budget requests this year.
Are there any budget-related questions for, yes?
I see you have down here for an intern as well. Could you kind of tell us how needed and what?
Yeah, absolutely. So we anticipate that, well, there's a couple of things going on. First, we've had that in the budget, and we just haven't come up with the right project to really assign or try to go out and look for it, so we've just kind of been kicking the can. We expect that this economic development action plan matrix, some of the recommendations in there are going to call for data collection and research, so that sounds to me like good intern projects. We also, and actually Mary probably just finished this up just a matter of moments ago, are going to be applying to have that intern funded through the University of Southern Maine. So we're hoping that it can be something that is paid for outside of the budget, and that would be, I believe, to Councilor Hitchcock's question, I believe that's a paid and student credit position when, the way USM does it. But it's not a guaranteed thing. I think they, you know, you put your project in, and they, the students can look at it and say, "That sounds awful. I don't want to apply for that." So we may not get anybody through that program, but I'm hoping we can make it sound interesting enough that someone might leave. So that's a hope, but if not, we'd still like to have the option to bring someone in on a temporary basis, probably fall, just because that's how the timing works out better, because that, we expect that that action plan, market analysis and action plan won't be completed until July, August. So fall would be an ideal time to get started on that.
Are there any other questions for Keith? Very much standard.
Thank you.
Good luck. Hi, Bill. It's been a while. I haven't seen you in a while.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we'll jump right in. On the operating budget, we've added the assistant director position, and that's necessary because we need to do cross-training, and we're worried about turnover, and also succession planning, because I'll be retiring in four years, hopefully. Next item is cloud backup and cloud disaster recovery. We've been doing cloud backup for two years, but we had to increase the capacity because we're adding more data, and we'll be implementing cloud disaster recovery in the coming year. Contract services under my operating budget is my biggest account. That's where all the annual support comes from. Most vendors are taking 5% to 7% increases each year. So one of the things I've done to try to stem the tide is where applicable, renew software support every three years, because they end up giving you discounts when you do that. The capital improvement plan, we've really got three new pieces of equipment, or, well, one is a lease that's already existing for our VMware server environment, this backup storage. We need a new primary storage array, because the current one will be five years old, and Dell will not extend support on that for any amount of money. And then new switches to connect the storage with the physical hosts. The other project we have, multi-factor authentication, that's going to be required by the FBI in October, will actually be funded with leftover money in a software CIP. And since this also involves some of our dispatch partners, they're going to foot some of the bill for their portion as well. Pretty much my most difficult project this year is multi-factor authentication in the police cars. I don't want to get into the details, but it's going to be a pretty complicated solution. And now, I wanted to mention future cloud considerations. They're not really this year budget items, but these are going to whack us in the future. Exchange server licensing from Microsoft is changing. They're kind of mum about the prices so far, but it's going to be a per-user, per-month cost, even if you're self-hosted, at which point we're going to look at maybe using Microsoft 365 and Exchange Online. A lot of organizations are going that way. Munis Financial Software that we're running also wants to pull us into the cloud. They're allowing self-hosted for now, but they're claiming that the current version we're on will only be supported for another two or three years, and then they're forcing us to the cloud. So in general, we've got to consider, are we going to go fully cloud or partial cloud and leave some of the items, you know, some of the service here? And I would make the case that we leave at least some of our servers here. We have two very well-equipped server rooms. We've got a lot of fiber connections in the server room in the city hall. So, you know, I think that we'll continue to be self-hosted, at least for the foreseeable future. Questions?
The boring backbone. That's what you do, Bill. Any questions? Yes, Jonathan?
Just more of a comment early. You know, there are times where service to the internet gets interrupted, so I think having as much local as we can is good, just for reliability's sake.
Yeah, due to the nature of our business, that's kind of necessary, in my opinion. Think back to Ice Storm of '98.
But Jonathan, Sanford Fiber never goes down.
Yeah, it's amazing. I'm just saying. It's quite amazing. I have it at town.
Little plug there, Steve.
So that's what I was just checking, wanted to reference, is you want to leave the two room servers that we have existing. You want those, right?
Yeah, we need to keep those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just add, this is our conversation every year. How much longer can we sustain what we're doing now? Being forced into the cloud, losing control of our servers and our own virtual environment elements, just, one would think that there would be an economy of scale and a cost savings there, that, you know, massive server banks, they could do it less, but we're not seeing that reflected in the price.
It's a different way of making money. Everybody wants a recurring, that's why you see more apartments and single families. "Oh, I can get income forever." That's why we have the campgrounds today.
Maybe if we could get 365 with ads in it, it'd be cheaper.
Well, Amazon thinks that's the way to go. Yep, yep. Okay, any other questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Good to see you. Wait, are you back again already? Code enforcement, the other half of your hat. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, guys, again. Today's conversation is really just emphasizing the need for current staff levels and the desire not to think that my department is a good spot to potentially make a cut. We've seen continuous growth in volume of both inquiries and permits issued for the last, I'm going to say 10 years straight. More specifically, the last three or four years, it's been rapid incline in both phone conversations and permits issued. It's just pretty much constant. On top of it, the codes department did absorb many of the former fire marshal's duties. We share those with your fire chiefs. They perform some of those duties, and I perform the rest of them. As we mentioned, we kind of added planning duties into the codes office, although we did transfer funds from the planning budget into the codes budget to compensate for that extra position in the codes side. As Ann mentioned earlier, if you combine the two budgets, there's a very modest increase between the two that doesn't even technically equate for the contractual raises and stuff in the contracts. Current level of staffing, which is the director, the safety permit specialist, and admin assistant, and two code officers, that is on the code enforcement side. Ian is speaking next for land bank in the codes office, is also two code officers funded through the land bank positions. That primary duties are the land bank, but also does help on inspections as needed, to help keep the inspections rolling. And then, just a birdie for future years, if it continues to grow as it has the last couple of years, I might be asking for additional personnel in the years to come. Obviously, this year is not the year, but in the future, if things continue down the path they are, the workload is not sustainable forever.
So I remember having conversations where there were the two of you, and you'd talk about the codes enforcement office in Bedford, and it was, what, eight people, or something like that? So it's not surprising here, that this size, it's been necessary for a while. So right now, on the codes side, is that what's fully staffed, because you lost someone on the land bank side, or is it the other way around? For the, where was he?
So in reality, when we hired the most recent code officer, that was filled for the land bank, and then the second land bank code officer was switched to the code enforcement budget. So on paper, right now, the code enforcement side looks fully staffed, and it looks like a vacancy on the land bank. We really all work together, so although for budgetary reasons, we have to keep the four code officers separate, really, we all kind of help each other.
Yep.
So it's two separate line items, but really, all are cross-trained. The theory behind everybody's department is we're trying to cross-train, so in the event one person goes out, the department doesn't go down. We've cross-trained both planning and codes, land bank and codes, so we...
You have Jeannie, Aaron, permit specialist.
Alex.
But she's not the codes person.
She's a code officer, but she's, her title is permit specialist now.
Right. So if there's two and two, do you fill one of the two? No?
Yes.
Okay, so let's be realistic here. Jamie's one of the two, as well as serving as the planning director, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's what, I was doing the math in my head, and she, because I wasn't going to count Alex, because she's the permit specialist.
There are very few opportunities for relax in the codes and planning office at this point.
I wanted to make it very clear, it isn't actually another person. It's Jamie fulfilling that position, so the refilling the recently lost position is necessary.
Is vital.
Is vital, yep. Okay, Steve?
So this guy is, his only fault is he underestimates his revenues every year, right? And he puts it back on me, so...
Does he have revenue?
Well, we have already, and we may some more, but, you know, they hit their projections six and a half months in.
Yep.
So...
In reality, it was six months, two days, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to emphasize that too much.
So he knows those details, but he won't give you revenues.
Because the market is going to, I keep saying the market has continued to grow, and last year I hit revenues at like seven months, this year we hit it at like six months. But I'm very scared for you to say, "Okay, I'm going to double the revenue expectation," because then next year, I'm going to come to you in June and say, "Sorry, guys, I didn't quite hit it." We all know that eventually this bubble is going to, I'm not going to say burst anymore, because I don't think it's going to burst, but it might level.
So somewhere between the high he wants to have and the low she wants to have, you're probably about right, because she's very conservative. He's, you know...
Well, every year, we pluck out the extraordinary. "Oh, no, that was because of this, this, these two or three extraordinary projects," and it comes back, right?
But you don't want to hit it on the bad year.
Not necessarily with extraordinary projects. It's sheer volume now.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, Steve. I don't know what it is anymore. I just...
Well, you're the voice of reason that's supposed to step in the between.
I thought so.
Okay.
It's a negotiation, right?
Yes, well, you can only guess, unfortunately.
And I'll throw one more thing on that. I know you guys are making some tough decisions probably this year. The code enforcement fees, although we pull in quite a bit of money, they're still lower than most of our cities surrounding towns, so there might be room to potentially raise those values a little bit. I mean, contractors aren't going to like it. We've been working for a decade to become more business-friendly, and permit fees are part of that, and I just wanted you aware that we are lower than most of our city or large-town counterparts.
Yeah, and when do we have the time to actually, do you have a proposal that we can look at, like?
I haven't done one yet. I'm just trying to throw out solutions, and that might be a potential help to the overall picture.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Councilor Stackman?
So is there a guesstimate about how much additional revenue that would bring in?
We're currently at eight dollars per thousand for a cost of permit. Most of the other towns are in the 10 to 12, but that's a 20% increase. And say, right now, we're at $275,000 collected, 20% of that's, I mean, a decent sum of money. So there is a potential to, if you, after all these budget discussions, talk about revenues, I would feel more comfortable raising the per-permit cost, instead of jumping the overall, keep the permit fees the same, and double their projected income.
Okay. I hear that.
Or both.
I like the number 10, because it's easy to do the math with the number 10.
Yeah, so when you think about that, when you look at, you look at the school's budget, you look at our budget, our expenses are up 10%, right? Operationally, it seems that it is the new cost of doing business. That's where we've settled in for this jump here, so it seems reasonable that if all of our expenses are going up 10%, to take the fees by the same relationship would not be extraordinary at all, so that's another 30 grand, so.
He's not wrong to think that, you know, the fees probably are a good place to look, because you can make a rationale that your service, a portion of your service is specific for the people who are using it. So, okay. Any questions? Yes, Councilor Hansman?
And I just wanted to mention and or ask Steve if we, if the department heads have CIP requests, they'll discuss those today as well.
Okay.
So I was going to make note that neither the planning, so nobody so far has had any CIP requests, because we have a lot of spreadsheets we're bouncing around over here.
Well, Bill had some.
Or well, Bill had that.
Because he has computers, but he has some every year, so.
Yeah, it's the virtual environment. None of us understand it, so.
You didn't say that.
Bill's is ongoing, so I tried to pull the new, the different, the extraordinary, you know, Bill's is ongoing for the lease elements on our server environment, so, and it's hard to raise.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Ian, I think he stole most of your thunder, but...
I doubt it. I wanted to say, just first of all, let's try to think of how to describe that, and I think someone describes government as like a ship that takes a while to turn, and I think that's, you know, what the planning, code enforcement, and land bank office have been experiencing. I mean, I think the exiting new hire of a code enforcement officer, that we're training them up, so, you know, what does the land bank do? We train our code enforcement officers. So Jeannie's been with the city now for six years and moving into new things, and Aaron's been with the city for five, and it goes just to show that we've got some longevity there. But it also is a major investment to get them in place. So when you put the land bank in place, it was really to adjust, to address the tax imbalance between single-family properties and multi-unit properties. So I just want to talk just briefly about what they, what it does. So directly, it does increase the value of your multi-unit stock, and it... So, directly, it, it does increase the value of your multi-unit stock, and it does therefore decrease the tax burden on your single-family properties. And then, second of all, you were talking about revenue, and I just pulled it for my presentation, but $370,000 of, of budgeted in the last year, but direct, indirectly, every notice of violation, as the code enforcement officers inspect the, the multi-unit stock, results in permits, and then the process of processing, processing those permits results in that, in that revenue line, so just to be aware of that. So, that's the, and then, just to, just to say it, it's to support economic and community development for the city, and it's been successful in that. We spent a little bit of time talking about the funding of those two code enforcement officers and what they, what they serve in there, and I do, I do try to support Jamie in, in, in the amount of activities taken on, because it's a little hard to, to get a sense of that, so, you know, that I'm, I'm down there at least an hour a day, just filling in as needed. And so, I know that's been on the city council goals for the last two years at least, to, to backfill land bank activities, and as Steve needs more things done, you know, what can I, what can I shift over? And so, Jamie and I, when we were reviewing for the budgets this year, we were discussing, you know, what, what that would be, and given, I know what we were looking at going into the budget, that we didn't fund, and, and I see this as a, I wanted to fill it with a community development specialist or something with that regard to do, to fill in on the dangerous buildings, train them up on that processes, and then also support the licensing of both the vacant and dangerous building fees. It's, again, a really good training activity for, for, for code enforcement and, and building the capacity for this. And then, the land bank is focusing on the inspection of lowest-value multi-units, I've got some reports to the land bank commission coming up, there's, they, they're doing 10 housing voucher property reviews a week, and I'll say that there's, there's 598 voucher units in the city, so they're, they're, again, it's, it's, they're following up with the file.
Is that GA voucher or housing voucher?
Housing voucher.
Thank you.
And, and so, they're following up on the file with that, following up on the notice of violations, our record, and then again, generating permit revenue to correct those, any deficiencies, or at least deeming it good. And those are, those are the housing units that we wanna keep in the best shape, too, because they, they, they meet the requirements. And then, what, what the land bank also does is it follows up on housing and property complaints, and I speak with other municipalities throughout the state regularly, speaking with Waterville and, and talking about what we do here in Sanford, and finding out that their single code enforcement officer for, for the city of Waterville spends 50% of his time doing complaints. So, what, what the land bank also does is fills in that gap, because those complaints, as the land bank knows, and all city councilors know, that those, those complaints about property maintenance never go away. Not to say that there's infinite work there, but it's just a necessary activity of what we do. I also wanted to say that a change that the land bank made, and a new ordinance that the city council passed, was an insurance requirement, and that's going smoothly this year. It's actually generated business, we're getting a pretty good response, and people are actually going out and getting insurance, so that's a, that's a, another added benefit of that. And then, we picked up the Knox Box mandate from the former city marshal, fire marshal position, and that, that's been more difficult to implement, but it's just something that we picked up from the elimination of that position last year. And then, on to the, the land bank itself, the dangerous building process, I think as the city council knows, it's a very effective process, I think there's some comments that it takes so long, but it, it's necessary. We've averaged, over my time here, 15 hearings per year. The city council set a goal last year of 12 hearings per year, or three per quarter, and we're looking at potential blighted building designation and future process, so if you're talking about revenue, I've got a proposed ordinance for the land bank tomorrow to add a designation for blighted buildings, specifically, three properties in the downtown possibly undertaking a dangerous building process for those with, with $30,000 in revenue. And then, so I, I've just made a note here on workflow planning. The dangerous building process is immense when I prepare for those one, it, it takes up a, a week, it requires me to drive, you know, wherever those are, and take pictures and all the above, along with all the legal process and everything like that, that I do get a lot of support from the land bank, excuse me, from the code enforcement officers from, but we could do more. And then, the land bank activities, you know, to, to reduce the number of hearings each year wouldn't reduce the land bank activity itself, that includes all the receivables that we currently have, all the land bank foreclosures, I have everything, the, the land bank has everything under contract, except for 13 Island Avenue during property safety committee, some guy came in and, and really wanted to buy it, so we'll, we'll see where that goes, but that's, that's the way that these are, that these are currently flowing. And then, a focus on housing, so this is a focus on housing, but I also wanted to mention a focus on downtown, I mentioned the blighted buildings, and then also a focus on the down, on the mill yard. And I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention just the, the land bank commissioners, and it's City Councilor Maura Hurley, Nathaniel Hitchcock, Peter Transmontaine, as well as Nicholas Rue, Timothy Demont, Joe Sivini, and Rebecca Lapierre, and also Diane Small and John Carmahalas. And as a matter of fact, that, as we continue to apply for brownfield funds or await an award, they actually are designated as the brownfield advisory entity board, so just there is that renewed focus on the mill yard and brownfield. So, the, and then, I'm gonna just skip, these are my non-sequiturs here, so I'm gonna hop over to capital projects. So, a project that I've done, and we're still paying lease payments on it, it was a five-year lease, $94,225, is, is the second-to-last payment on the, the streetlight system, the LED streetlights. If anybody has any complaints about it, you're, feel free to reach out, I just, we still try to address those as, as well as Public Works. And then also, the lease purchase on the Notre Dame site, a, a former church site for the Springville Fire Station, that's, these, the LED, just like the LED, these are committed, and the lease payment this year is $250,600. We've got another equal payment the next year, and then $100,000 the following year. And then, that, that's, that's one property, and then, as well, we've got the final engineering for referendum is submitted in the capital budget. We had a city council meeting and discussion on that a couple of weeks ago, $168,000. I don't, not gonna elaborate on the fire station right now, but just, that's one of the capital items that you've committed to. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Maybe this might, this might be more for Steve, but the pre-development costs of 168, we're still, that's still a possibility pulling from overlay, correct? Or from fund balance? I forget which we were talking about.
The council approved that to go, go either way, so we'll reassess before your budget is finalized, and, and see if we're, if we anticipate that we'll be able to pull that from fund balance?
That's still on the G, we're still waiting for the GA resolution. Anne Marie says it might be 80%, not 90, but.
Eighty's better than 70.
Yes, it is, I think. Any other questions for Ian? Okay, thank you very much, Ian, appreciate it. Hello, sir, how are you?
Here comes the new guy.
I know, I'm gonna, you know something, like I said, I've been here too long, and you're gonna have to say your name again.
Yeah.
We don't get to see the assessing department, it's kind of like seeing Mr. Bottin, to see him every once in a blue moon.
Down the back corner.
Right.
My name's Ben Thompson, and I'm the city assessor. I'm gonna start off with giving you an update of what I've been doing down there since, in the back corner, since I've been here. It's my understanding, and probably Steve could correct me, but I think you haven't had a full-time assessor since about 2006, it's been a shared position, I think, for quite a long time, anyway.
It has been a long time.
So, fair enough to say quite a long time. One thing, as I walk in, my history also, just to let you know, is I came from a position of overseeing six different communities at the same time. So, I came in with many different efficiencies, more for survival than anything else in my former job, but also was able to come down here with Excel spreadsheets for TIFs, things that worked well in, in the position that I formerly had, that I've implemented down here. So, going through and trying to get my feet underneath me down there in the department, first thing that hit me, I came in with six weeks to get to commitment, which was quite short time period, to double-check everything, make sure we get there as accurately as we possibly can, and no personal property was done. So, when I got there, not only was it not done, but the CAMA system wasn't even set up to properly put the, the personal property in, so that was one of the first things I did, was build and install personal property tables into the CAMA, so now, when you print off a personal property, property card, you can actually see what we've assessed people for, not just one line item, which is gonna make it more beneficial as we go into this process right now. We're getting ready to go around again for personal property, and there's a lot of training for your business people in town to get them to where they need to be, which will be easier for them in the long run as well. One of the other things I've, I've done was correct the property record card again in the background on the system. Having access to my former job, we had Vision 8 up there as well, it's really interesting to me that, having had my hands on multiple towns with Vision 8, you would think you'd get the same product every time, but you don't. You get, I don't know if somebody else is different is working on them as they put these together, but here in Sanford, you were not getting the net taxable value if you had a homestead exemption or veterans or something like that, showing on the property record card, you were getting the gross value, so we would have to do the math longhand to show somebody this is where you were, this is what you were taxed on. That has now been corrected as well. One of the bigger things to do to get to commitment was review all the TIFs, read through every, every one of the three-ring binders that Aaron had down there in the vault, try to be as accurate as I could on those, put those together into the Excel spreadsheet, and it's worked pretty well, there's been a couple of things we've, I've caught along the way and had to do an amendment to, but this year's definitely gonna shake out pretty well. We've also moved forward, tree growth was not being processed correctly, we need to keep track of those on a timely basis for every day of the year, they were processing down there as of the first of the year, so if you have withdrawal penalties, those are very timely and legal-sensitive timeliness. So, we now have got those on an Excel spreadsheet with a countdown timer, if you will, and they turn color codes, so we can look at that real quick and say, hey, we're at 160 days out, we need to get a letter out to these people. So, we're tracking a few more penalties as well, so that's more revenue coming into the town on a timely basis. We've also gone through, this is something I did in the other towns that I had, was your campgrounds, they were kind of a hit or miss as to what was out there, there was a lot of reliance on the campground owners to provide the information previously. We have now already in, behind us in October, gone out, done a full, full inspection of Apache and Yellowstone, laid hands on every camper out there, took photographs, I've typically always kept track of that in the real estate side, but here, we're keeping track of the personal property and talking with Aaron about it, that's where we're gonna keep it for now, but we still have the information that we need, and that's kind of a three-part process, because we go out, put hands on in the fall, that's 90% of what I, I need to know. I know that camper was there, that gives us the winter to put this data into the system, into the CAMA system. We are now at that point in the year right now, letters are going out, we're prepping those for next, next week. The biggest thing that we're trying to get right now is that, that list from the campground owners, I still need to know who owns this camper on this site. Presumably, they don't change too much, but we still wanna verify, that's the second piece of information we have, we then send a mailer out to every campground owner saying, hey, tell me what you have on that site, so that's the third piece of the information that should all match in the end. If it doesn't, then it also eliminates the need for an abatement in the process, if we find there's a problem there, then okay, let's figure that out. So, we're in the middle of the process of that, I do a second inspection just before April 1st to verify that no camper's been pulled off-site, hands-on, just to verify. So, it's continuing to meet with different department heads, assessing, holds hands with your treasurer, holds hands with your airport, holds hands with codes, especially planning, and we're trying to get as much information as we possibly can, your fire marshal as well, if there's fires, that's information that we need. Economic development, I've had time to sit down with Keith, and we've, we've met quite a, a couple of weeks ago for quite a couple, few hours, and that was good. We wanna make sure all the information that is being processed is actually being processed through the assessing department, and then processed over to your treasurer and tax collector, and that's where the information flow should, should go, and we're, we're getting there, it's, it's coming along quite nicely. Other things that I'm finding in the system that is just, I'll say due to no, no shakeup for many, many years, sketches, there's, there's a way, industry standard, how sketches should be done. Right now, I'm finding a lot, I hate to even say, but probably 85, 90% of them in the system are layered on top of each other, so if I was to give you a property card, it's very difficult to explain to a taxpayer what you're assessing them for, because you can't see all the codes when they're layered on top of each other. The way it should be done is in individual blocks, and it's probably difficult to explain to you, but from the top layer down to the bottom, to the basement, so then I can show, show you, if we're assessing you for a finished basement, I can clearly show you, you know, this is a cathedral ceiling, this is the first floor, and this is the finished basement or the unfinished basement, working on correcting those as well. Just overall, in general, I'm finding a few different things in the CAMA system that's not, not set up the way it should be, in my opinion. Another thing that we've had down there was a shared drive in the shared folders, I live and breathe, we gotta have paper, but I live and breathe on the computer, so I wanna have copies down there that all staff down there have access to, that was one of the things that I'm still sorting through, what was kind of held back, and, and the former assessor had in, in their file, and I'm fumbling through, nobody else knew what was in there sometimes in, in trying to find the right information, other people in the office didn't have it. I was told by staff down there that there's been times when the city managers come down asking for information, they were not able to provide it, and now they have, he actually came down this fall, and they put their hands right on it, because I'm training them on that, and that's continuing to grow as well. So, based upon that information, hopefully, I've communicated, there's a lot of work going on down there, and that would drive my need and my request for, again, here's a new guy asking for another person, for an appraiser, personal property specialist. There is a lot of work and a lot of education out there for the public to process the personal property, to know how to file correctly, to understand the Betty program, to understand the Better program, which is a reimbursement with the state, to get them onboard, it's gonna take a lot of hand-holding, preferably, the way that they would submit would be submitting with Excel, and they can file through email, we have a lot of paper-hard copies right now, you always have that situation with personal property, that every business files slightly different, which is fine, we understand that, but that is a lot of work, and from what I'm seeing, where I came from, we would always go out this time of year, a little bit a couple of weeks previous to this, and we would hands-on, make sure every business is still there. That hasn't been done for years down there. So, and that's one of those things right now, it's just you don't have the bodies to do everything that needs to be done. That would be one of the biggest projects that this individual would do under my guidance, is basically be a personal property specialist, but also, we would utilize them for regular real estate permit inspections as well. So, as Jamie identified, permits has not slowed down, we have to touch pretty much almost every permit that's out there as well, not the intermediate permits, but definitely the COs, any decks, anything that they don't even necessarily always go out and check, smaller permits, we still have to go out and value. So, with that increase on their end, it's also an increase on ours. There are different efficiencies that I am going to, you know, working on implementing there as well. One of the things in the past that has been done, that all the permits were coming from codes, were being entered into the CAMA system, but nobody was utilizing it, so if there's a, you're getting a chicken, that chicken permit's in the system, and we need to mine those out and get this permit entity in, in vision to work for us. I should be able to run a report on permits, and I should be able to run a report on, under construction condition, so if it's a UC percentage, it's not 100% built, we should be able to run those reports, and we should be checking those in the fall as well as the spring, which has not, it's kind of been an ongoing process, but I do see some deficiencies. Currently, we have, as of last week when I ran my report, 9,628 real estate parcels that are active and 843 personal property accounts. that are active and 843 personal property accounts. Um, the International Association of Assessing Officers, uh, which we, we label the IAAO, um, sets up standards, they create standards and policies for tax assessors and for tax policy throughout, uh, the world actually, but we subscribe to the North American and US chapter. Um, these policies that they set in place and the standards that they set in place are typically reviewed and adopted by states to create state law for assessing practices. Um, so I have, I have reviewed, um, a publication that they have labeled the IAAO Standard on Property Tax Policy, published January 2020. Uh, in that, they talk about, they speak to a criteria for measuring fairness, quality, equity, and accuracy, which is our charge as assessors to be as fair and accurate to the taxpayer as we can. They also list in there what median staffing recommendations for North American agencies, which include the US and Canada, um, has risen from 25, uh, 2,500 parcels to 2,700 parcels per employee. Um, they base their research on Walters and the IAO Research Committee, from two, research they did in 2014, 2016. Uh, based upon that recommendation of 2,700 real estate parcels per employee, um, we are short. Um, so that, you do the math on that, that comes up to 3.6 employees that should be in that department down there. Typically, uh, this, um, does not account for support staff. Um, they do not really look at administrative, although right now we're using our, uh, administrative assistant, um, to track, um, tree growth, any current use, you know, which, so we're using them on an appraisal level to some small degree. Um, so with that said, um, we really could use that appraiser in that office. Um, recommendations that they make also on this mean number does not include personal property because some states, states don't chase personal property like New Hampshire. So that's additional burden on the tax, on the assessing office down there. Um, so I would be looking for, there'd be a, a total of four employees down there, it'd be the assessor, the deputy, and the appraiser, and then the administrative assistant. The other thing I would like to look at is the possibility of, of future retirements that could happen in that office, uh, probably sooner than later, um, to cross-train somebody and get somebody else in there that may stay, I mean, it's hard to tell nowadays as human resources reported, but, um, to try to get somebody in there that we could train if we have to, preferably get somebody that has some experience. I've been through that in my former job too, and it's also very difficult to find anybody with the experience that we need, especially since COVID. Yes, basically typically you're bouncing people from one town to the other, just like I just did.
Yes, I think it's a career that's growing. Um, you do know that we're just trying to hope not to have to cut positions this year, let alone add much, okay? But I see what you're saying. I understand what your, what your need is.
I think my job is to identify, um, issues and necessary things and...
It's good, it's good, even if, even if it's a couple of years out, it's, it's good to know in advance that you're headed in that direction, so we appreciate the honesty. Um, so, do you have anything else to finish your presentation?
I do, so just to cover, touch on the last two, uh, items would be for CIP. So your favorite and mine is going to be discussion about revaluation. Um, so, we have not had a revaluation, full measure list in the city, uh, since 1987. So by the time we pull the trigger on this, you're talking 40 years before, since somebody's done a full measure list. It is time. Um, also, right now, I'm not calling for a revale, but I'm just kind of alerting to the fact there are no funds set off to the side to pay for said revale. Um, so again, just alerting to that information, having a conversation with the city manager. Um, the question on the table is, do we want to build a CIP over the next couple, few years, or if you want to bond that out, that's a conversation you guys can have later, but...
What's $55 to $65 per parcel?
Uh, yeah, I've done three full-on hand, trust me, the last person that wants to do a full-on measure list revale is me. Done three since 2020. And so you're supposed to do these roughly every 10 years, so in the four years, I've done 30 years' worth of experience. So it, that is what it has been. Um, I, I obviously, that's the best guess for the size of the city. So I just did, in '22, we did Falmouth and Gorm at the same time.
Yeah, that went well in Gorm.
It was fun. They were good, solid revales, in all honesty, it blew up on Facebook, so, yep. Um, so the other thing that we were looking at, so, um, I'm sorry, just let me check my notes real quick. Yeah, so the, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I discussed everything on the revale. So Power BI is a software put out by Microsoft, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with it at all. Um, I used it during the revales, uh, for the two, um, towns up there that I just discussed. Um, it was more started out as a conversation with managers that they just wanted, obviously, that extra layer of, hey, we want another set of eyes on this massive project. Um, David Cornell is an IAAO instructor, um, nationwide, uh, he lives locally in New Hampshire, um, he is also a specialist in Power BI. We have had a meeting with him, um, probably nation, he goes nationwide teaching about Power BI and specifically to the assessing department. Um, I do have a number from him now, um, at first when this was all put together, we were kind of guessing. We do have funds in a CIP, a little over $12,000. Um, that turns out that that would be about 62.5% to pay for this whole project. So, um, the cost right now, as he stated, was $20,000. I knew that he was, he was roughly around 25, uh, but I wanted him to throw a number on it, I can't speak for him. Um, I actually even went back and had a conversation with him that you're lower than what I expected, uh, from the previous towns, and he goes, well, I know who I'm working with, and he appreciated that, you know, we work well together, um, so he did give you a discount as far as that goes, which is great.
And this is, so this is the 7,600 Steve that you have here? Okay, thank you.
So i- it's a situation where, uh, for those revales, basically, he was utilized, hired by the, by the towns to double-check all the information. I was able to have access to the Power BI reports, but I could not control them, um, which was great. It, it did identify a lot of errors and a lot of issues which we have in our system here. Uh, we, we were able to identify those very quickly, um, and fix them. Um, alert, either alert the contractor to do it, or, or a lot of times I'd do hands-on myself and make sure they were done. What I explained to him that I would like now, because this is kind of a slowdown for me a little bit, down here, is I would like to have him tutor me so that I understand how to build these myself. Um, my goal would be to, this would be a great tool to learn the city very quickly, as it was with the revales for me up there, uh, identify what issues we have in the KAMA system, uh, but then as we progress to a revaluation, we could also use it to check the revaluation, clean up before, check during the revale, and make sure whoever, whatever contractor's actually putting things in correctly, and then it would be great, it's a great tool to continue on afterwards. And so if we're trained down there in the office, it's, it's good money spent. I am done.
Okay. Okay, so, any questions? He's been quite thorough. So 7,600 is in there to complete the cost for purchasing the Power BI. Um, obviously, the thought process of saving for a revale, I think, is a good one, and, um, he wants an appraisers in some distant future.
So far on your budget, the 125,000 that was proposed to save towards the revale, that's, that's out, that's not in there right now.
Which is?
125.
Oh, the revale, yes, I, I, I saw the 7,600, I knew the revale wasn't in there, but he's not wrong in saving for it before we get a big hit. Okay, any other questions? John, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just for the audience, can you explain the personal property that you mentioned a few times? That's for businesses only?
For businesses, yeah. Um, state law requires that we actually, uh, assess for personal property. Um, typically, most assessors, there has been one that's gone out there in the past that has tried to get your chainsaw and everything else, and they weren't in their position very long. Um, so we typically chase after businesses. There, there are programs in place from the state, the Business Equipment Tax Exemption Program, which we, we shorten up by Betty, and the Reimbursement Program, Business Equipment Tax Reimbursement Program, uh, which we call Better. And so there are, there are things available to businesses, um, I don't know how far you want me to go with all that, because I could talk all night, but, um, if anybody has questions on that, I, I would urge them to contact my office. Anybody that's...
It's a little more involved, yeah, it's, it's not something, it's something you should know better, though, so I would recommend catching up with him to know the Better Betty program.
I was, I was getting to the question of, does that tax money just go to the state or does part of that come to the city as well?
Revenue to the, just revenue to the city.
Okay.
So it can be as little as desks in an office to major manufacturing equipment.
And it's quite a chore, in all honesty, because a lot of, even your bigger businesses, until they understand, a lot, bigger businesses file in different places, so, I mean, uh, you get a lot of different assessors with a lot of different opinions on what they're doing, so it's, it's tricky for some of the businesses that are in more than one town to understand, what are we, what are you looking for? Um, mine, I had six, my hand on six up there at Cumberland County, uh, so they know. So some of them trickle down here, uh, some of them the same entities that I deal with, uh, up there that I've dealt here. Um, and a lot of it, though, is your local businesses, and there are more efficient ways than what I'm seeing. Um, I actually had to sit down with, uh, an individual taxpayer, um, last week, it was on a different matter, but I brought up, um, his wife's business as an example, and showed him and kind of walked him through it real quick, that it would change their taxable from a couple, few hundred dollars is what they had to pay for personal property, down to $11 if they file the Betty, if they file for the exemption. So we do get a reimbursement from the state on the exemption. Um, so then it comes down to the things that Aaron and I have talked about, your collectability of your personal property, you know, you're in the hole by, what, a million dollars or so right now, that it hasn't been collected on personal property, uh, for whatever various reasons. You know, sometimes if we, if we train people on the exemption, that you're going to get a reimbursement, hopefully, from the state, uh, maybe that will help increase our revenues.
It's only 50% reimbursement, am I correct?
So there's four categories of personal property. Personal property that is not qualified for Better or Betty, that is, whatever the value is, we tax it, they pay us directly. There's Better, that's the older form of, of, uh, personal property, certain manufacturing equipment qualifies for that, um, they pay us and they're subject to reimbursement by the state. That did not go well in the past, the business owners did not like that because the state had a track record of not paying them. They'd pay us, but they wouldn't get reimbursed by the state. That's where Betty came from. Um, Betty was negotiated at the state level whereby the risk of being reimbursed was now borne by the municipality. So the business, businesses would file their personal property value under Betty, um, and then we would file to the state for reimbursement for Betty, which may or may not come. Uh, and then they also, because under the, the state's, um, um, constitution, they only have to reimburse you for 50% of what they tell you you have to do. So they, they then depreciate that to 50% and reimburse us for half. The fourth category is my, one of my favorite, which is the Community Solar, created a fourth category of personal property whereby Community Solar and only Community Solar gets a 50% discount on their taxation. So hopefully Senator Woodson will fix that for us this term, but we'll find out.
We shall see. Okay, so, do we have any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for the education, I think it's more of an education than education.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Hi.
Hello.
Other Erin.
Yes. Other Erin M.
I'm just joking.
Um, actually Ben called me today, and it was the wrong person. I was the other Erin, Erin M. today. Okay, so I'm going to break my office into two categories and talk about the treasurer side, tax collector side, and then the voter reg. So on the treasurer's side, there is, um, really no anticipated staff changes or increases, um, I hope I don't jinx that by saying that. Um, this year and the next year of our upcoming year, we're going to continue to cross-train tasks, um, and assign new tasks to less seasoned employees. Um, I think it's good to have the office know which each other does, so we can continue to keep moving when we have absences. Um, another thing is, on the treasurer's side, we are customer-facing, but we're also internal, so my customers are my coworkers. Um, so we've been trying to increase and enhance some of our fraud protection with, um, adding banking things and adding credit cards and those sort of things for departments, um, and we're continuing to hopefully modernize and get other people, other departments on board. When we do that, I'm talking about the city and the school, because we do the banking stuff for the school. So anytime we change something, we have to get the skit school, you know, on board and make it work for both of us. Um, so the increase on the voter reg side is because this year, we have a presidential election. So each year, the budget requests for voter reg changes based on what we have for elections for the next year. Um, things that increase, um, the elections, specifically this year, is, um, we'll have all of our election workers work at some point, the max that they'll pretty much can work. Um, our office will actually do on presidential election year, probably some overtime, which in the past Sue and I tried to pick up whatever needs to be done, instead of asking them to, um, pick up more time. And so we'll have a high volume of absentee voters. Uh, the administrative side of absentee voting is pretty heavy, you know, you have to get it ready, it's when it comes back, um, so that's very time-consuming. Um, anticipated high volume of in-person voting on Election Day, so we'll have the maximum of people on Election Day. Um, things that increase our voter registration budget each year is the minimum wage increases. So most of our election workers are just making over, just above, um, minimum wage, um, so that keeps adding. Um, and then new this year, we're going to have to do some more intense training sessions for election workers, um, there are some new election laws. We haven't in the past had many, um, emergency procedures, and we do have, one of our polling stations is in a school, and it has been a school day, and thankfully, nothing has happened in the past, but that's just kind of sitting like that we don't have those procedures.
We're working on that, hopefully. Be nice if it was closed for the day.
Yeah. Um, so that is going to be added, and we'll do that for all polling stations, not just the one of that school. Um, and ADA requirements, so, and then the next thing that we have on there that, um, factors into the voter registration budget is police coverage at all the polling stations. On presidential elections, we have them cover all three polling stations, on odd years, we just have them at the school. Um, and then just the minimal supplies that we use, paper costs have gone up, so we have voter reg, um, the voter lists at all polling stations, and that's a lot of paper. Um, and then we're seeing, uh, some of our polling locations increase their fees.
I told her she should, actually.
Yeah, but it's still a very good deal. She doubled it, but it's still tiny. It's less than what they were charging outside, you know, companies to use it, so.
That's, it's not much here.
No, sorry.
Here, no, that's fine, it's nice to have a few quick ones.
Yeah.
Um, because we have police and fire and public works, and yeah. Okay, thank you, any questions? This is pretty basic, seems, staffing.
Yeah. Could, could we ever, sorry, before you leave, could we ever put, say, unused iPads to use at our voting locations instead of printing out all the voter names?
That would probably be more of a Sue question, but I know the list, you're crossing things off, so it would be...
It's on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, she's actually, she probably is on Zoom, she might be able to answer it, but...
Because you mentioned that's a big, that is a lot of paper we're printing.
It is. So they do mark them off, I know, unfortunately, I don't want to say, in another chapter of my life, I did do some voter registration, election sort of things, but I know the state, you have like red ink that you use on things, so it's, you have to do, go by the guidelines, so it may be a requirement to have that.
Thank you.
Okay. Legal services, Steve, are you taking that one? It's, it's flat, so keep it quick.
Yeah, uh, it's flat, so, um, $10,000 for non-contract services, $120,000 for contract services, contract currently is with Bernstein Sure for, uh, legal services. Preliminary of the, the consumption of that is in, uh, the tax rea-, uh, well, excuse me. All of our TIF work is reimbursed by the developer. Uh, the land bank also, uh, through the special assessment, most of that work, it's, uh, taken up under there for as, as far as special assessment is concerned. The remaining fees, uh, go towards personnel, uh, work that we have done, bonding, uh, contract review, and other legal reviews for council items, uh, on the agenda, so. Uh, a non-contractor for those services that, that don't fall there, uh, they could, they could be, uh, an insurance claim and our, our portion of, of that. Um, it could be for, um, cable TV franchise, and we use it, an outside firm from Bernstein Sure, uh, things of that nature.
Okay. So next up we have, ooh, insurance, so much fun, property and casualty.
Ronnie, do you want the property and casualty?
Property and casualty insurance, we talked to MMA within the last couple of weeks. Um, they don't have their rates set yet, they said to budget between 5% and 7%. They said to budget between five and seven percent. We budgeted the five percent this year, which is about fifty-one percent, uh, fifty-one thousand dollars based on what we're currently paying. That budgeted amount is two hundred and seventy-two thousand. Again, we're with MMA Risk Management Services. I won't read through these, but I thought it was interesting to break down our coverage based on, um, property, general liability, public officials, automobile, and each dollar amount assigned to that number. So I put this in there in your packet just in case if there's some of you that want to dig into the details.
Fine arts.
Fine arts.
We have fine art.
You know where the fine arts are? Down at the historical committee, they have some of that Stickley, it's called Stickley Furniture.
Yes, I have some at my house.
Yes, so that's what the, that's what that is.
Okay. Okay. Nice. That used to be up at the town club. Okay. That's actually nice to see that broken out. Thank you.
I'd just make a comment about, uh, risk management services in general. I think it extends out to, uh, you know, workers comp, uh, the health trust and such and that. Main municipal not, not unlike ourselves is having a difficult time in stabilizing and retaining their, their workforce. So we've seen a lot of turnover in their workforce, a lot of vacancies in there, so that's sometimes slowed our ability to get services timely and difficulty in dealing, uh, with ongoing services with them, so.
Good evening, Chief. Are you ready?
Good evening.
Police Department, I'm assuming you're handling this in crossing guards?
Yes.
Or, no, school resource officers.
Yeah, school resource.
Cause Bill's in, Bill's in between.
Is crossing guards on there?
No, it's school, I meant school resource officers.
Yes.
So you can do both, I would assume, and then we'll have Bill come up.
Sure.
Okay. Go for it. Tell us what you're looking for and how things have changed.
Well, things have certainly changed. Um, we have began an effort some time ago to civilianize some positions within the police department so that we could better utilize police officers and police officer roles as opposed to having police officers do, um, a job that a civilian could do. Cost effect, more cost effective, better utilization of skillsets. So initially when we began this budget project, we had wanted to hire a court officer, civilian court officer to replace the police officer who does that now. We cut that out at our level because of the condition of the budget. We originally had desired to have another police officer in CID, our criminal investigation division, and we cut that out of our budget. We had desired to have a command vehicle that we talked about last year and we cut that out of our proposal because these are just not realistic. I mean, can we do the job without those? Yes, we can do it without. Would it be nice to have those things? Yes. And this is in a year to get nice, new shiny toys. So we understand that. We tried to be responsible and, uh, and get out in front of the problems we're talking about. LexisNexis, the online reporting system that we implemented a couple of years ago, we wanted to reach a target of about a hundred online reports a month and we're not even close to that. So we've pulled that out of the budget as well and that's a cost of, uh, it's twenty-two thousand dollars, it's eleven thousand dollars a year, but they only signed a two-year contract. So, so that's twenty-two thousand dollars that we pulled out as well. We can tell you that, um, what is still in the budget is seventy-seven ninety-eight for Nighthawk LEO Vision, which is a, um, program used to sift through large amounts of data. And I can tell you, Ronnie, you can pull that out. We're not going to utilize that. And.
Sorry, which, is that under the CIP?
Should be under, no, it'll be under two oh one, I think, two hundred or two oh one. It's under two oh one actually. Is that contract services, Ron? So, so what we are still maintaining in the budget is the, uh, mental health first responder. We have one currently and what we've seen, and to give you some, some data behind this and maybe you already have this, is in two thousand twenty-three, we had nine hundred and four mental health calls, four hundred and seventy-eight of those were between the hours of eight AM and four PM, and three hundred and twenty-six were from four PM to twelve AM. It demonstrates to us a need for a second mental health first responder so we can provide the best services possible to people in crisis. Uh, we, I think we all know that mental health is a serious issue here in America, um, not just here in Sanford or in the state of Maine. What we've, what supports this for us is that it allows us to immediately put a person in crisis in touch with someone who is, um, trained to handle that problem. And I don't think we've had that ability in years past. We could tell them to call a hotline, we could take them to the hospital where they can seek medical treatment, but they're not necessarily going to get mental health treatment, or we just go away. And the scrutiny that, um, I think the community has or the state has on just walking away leads us down the path of, of things sifting, of, of things not being addressed appropriately, and then we have tragedies. And I can tell you that just, uh, a couple of weeks ago, the MHU intervened with an individual and probably prevented a tragedy. And then a couple of weeks before that, they intervened with someone who had discharged a firearm several times in Sanford in a residential area and they likely averted another tragedy. They're doing multiple yellow flag, um, law interventions and, and even prior to the Lewiston event, Sanford was one of the highest, um, municipalities in the state, our police department was one of the highest in the state to actually utilize the, the yellow flag law.
It was mentioned again in the paper this morning, I mean, this weekend, right?
Yeah. And it continues, like, you know, our, our folks are working hard, they're working hard to keep, uh, to keep the community safe. So when I, when I, when we ask for, uh, a mental health first responder, those are the reasons why. We want to fill that gap from four in the afternoon until midnight to provide that coverage so that the evening and the midnight shift will have someone that they can bring and connect to sources, resources right away. Is, is this, you know, like, do we have to have this? Will we fold up and, and, uh, fail as an organization if we don't? No. So what we're asking you to recognize is balance the risk versus reward. Do we risk having, uh, something slip through the cracks and during those hours and not be able to prevent a tragedy? Or do we fill that with this position and try to shore up that, that need?
Do you, uh, see that this would be, um, the second mental health officer would be going to like the warm and shelter we have at nighttime, uh, directly intervening?
When there's a mental health crisis.
Intervention or whatever, yeah.
There are, because our evening shift goes there quite regularly now and it's a police officer responding. And, and there's been, um, quite a bit of interaction between the police department and the warming shelter. Much of it is good, it's, it's mostly positive, but there are folks that who have mental health needs that, um, friction has developed between the neighborhood even and the, the shelter. So having that opportunity to mitigate some of that would be good in the evening. Having that resource is, is worth bringing it forward to you in lieu of the other things that we've cut out prior to, because this is a year where we have to look at very, we have to look very closely at what we're asking for.
So before we move off, off in the second licensed clinical social worker, that's part of the part two, that, this has been my largest struggle in this entire budget, right? I can reasonably find, uh, agreeance with, with our department managers on most of any of the, the changes or, or reductions or, or pathways forward, but this has been my largest struggle in that, um, so I liken it to the, to the mental health unit's ability to like put people into the shelter with our partners and such and to that, there's capacity, capacity, capacity issues. But in this regard, it's because of the, the work that they have done and the partnerships that they have built, that there is capacity to have that second licensed clinical social worker, because when they take somebody to the E, to the ED, they've got the relationship with, with the medical providers that will do the assessment right, right then. And that's why we've been so successful in exercising the yellow flag laws and other, other actions. They've built that capacity, it's taken them the time, they have the ongoing relationships, they have the MOU with main behavioral health and such and to that. So for me, this, this is a very large struggle, it's difficult to, to afford it, there's no revenue stream with it, but it's again, as the chief indicated, it's the cost to benefit. So I, I'm offering you no solutions, I'm just telling you, I, I too, this is my larger struggle in the budget. It is. It is.
And just to be clear, Steve, you mean you're struggling because it's not included in part one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. We separated that out as, as part of the part two, uh, but, but again, this is, this is one of my larger struggles as to how to fund this position and see that it stays in because of the need.
And this is a different conversation, but it could be addressed through ARPA funds?
It could.
The, um.
This is the last year.
The advantage to having the clinical social worker, um, during a yellow flag is that they can make, they have the experience and the expertise to, to actually illuminate some of the, of the, um, of the disease process or the mental health issue where the, the police officer doesn't. What the police officer can articulate is what occurred and not necessarily why it's occurring or what mental capacities are, um, are in play. And some of the successes we've seen is that Shannon's been able to fill that gap in as a professional and say, well, that's because of, you know, schizophrenia or this or that. And that's helped, that presentation has helped when they do the, um, the evaluation with Sweetser, I think it's Sweetser who actually does the evaluation on.
Digital.
Yeah, no, this is for the yellow flag law, like.
Okay.
They, they do, uh, online with a clinician. Eric, do you know if it's Sweetser? Yeah, it is Sweetser. They do, so they, they'd have a Zoom. And again, it goes back to the MHU, they've, they've got it down that where they developed a, an iPad so they can do it all in one spot, all at the hospital, they can zoom in. They don't have to run the person back and forth from the police department to the hospital or from the hospital to the police department. They do it all in one spot. And so having that connection, having the professional there to make that, to help present the, um, the evidence of the documentation that we're talking about is, has been very valuable for us. And we just don't have that after hours.
With one of your officers, I don't think he likes to be on eight to four, prefers the four to eight, four to twelve? You can guess who it is.
Four to twelve.
Yeah, but, um, because it's, I think, a little more active and, yeah. Which is why they should be there, I guess. Um, okay. Any questions? Yes.
Were, were you done?
School resource officers, I think that's important to put this through.
I think we have some more, right?
Well, and I guess on the CIP, there was, um, a lot of the police department, uh, CIP items are what we call must do, right? Um, required series of, um, payment plans or, um, equipment replacement. One question that came up in a previous council meeting, um, budget meeting was the live scan fingerprint. And of course you did explain, or one of your staff explained in depth, you know, our deficiency with reporting, um, so clearly there's a, a need for it. But when we're looking at potentially being in such a tough spot and that, that LCSW position being so important, is that an area at all where if, if we were trying to piecemeal things together, that might be an opportunity to shift?
Hundred percent. Yeah. Again, our operation is not going to fold up if, uh, the live scan is put off. You know, that's, that's fact. So back to the CIP, and I don't know if I'm probably going out of order, but the, uh, the portable radios is a lease, we're locked into that, that's got to be paid for. The vehicle, the fleet maintenance that we have is a, is a program that, that Steve and, and the department worked with for a number of years. And I think we've, and I think Steve probably feels like we do too, we kind of have it right. We're rotating our cruisers at the appropriate mileage to get good value for them and not, not investing in repairs for broke down cruisers. We're not retaining them and turning them over to CID vehicles where they become, um, a whirlpool suction for repairs. And instead, we're getting value through either a municipal resale or, um, in the last couple of times, it's been trade-in value, which has been pretty successful. So three new cruisers, the leases that we have for our unmarked fleet exist already. Again, that's something we, we have to pay for. The Axon police cru, uh, cruiser camera system, currently we have WatchGuard, WatchGuard's been bought by Motorola. The, those systems are going to change significantly and this topic came up with Bill boughting. It's about a cloud-based service and we look at what Axon has with our current body cameras. We, we are going, basically the cost when you buy a new cruiser camera is they're factoring in the cost of storage into the camera. And they're driving agencies and municipalities towards cloud-based. We're being, we're being herded into that direction. We have almost no choice. So if we left between Motorola or Axon, we want to stay with Axon because that's our body cameras anyways and the two systems will speak to each other and interface much eas, much more easily. So our plan is to introduce those several at a time over the course of the next few years. And they're expensive, they're three times the cost of what our WatchGuard cameras were that we currently have. I think they're fifteen thousand dollars a system as compared to five thousand dollars a system. However, that storage cost is built in there. And storage at the police department, um, when I say storage, talking about data storage, is something that, that Bill works with the police department very well and we try to mitigate and what is going to be the best solutions for us long-term and where we're going. And I'm sure it's the same with, with Bill Tower as well. We're very interconnected with, um, many of the other departments, um, the fire department and finance and, and HR, and certainly with IS and the SRCC as well as TPW. We rely on each other to fulfill our missions. And, uh, I think it's important that we, we support each other as much as we can. The officer wellness program is something that's new this year as well. And again, this is sustainability for our police officers. You, it's an insurance plan, essentially is what this comes down to. We're insuring or trying to ensure that first responders and not just police officers is the, the, um, resources that we're looking to garner would also potentially be available or at least be a segue for, for, for our, um, our public safety officials in the SRCC as well as in the fire department to ensure that their mental health is, is maintained and that they don't face some decompression issue later on down the road. That helps with retention, that helps with our, um, workers comp, that helps with our hiring and our turnover rate. So investing what I think we can say is a relatively small amount of money to help ensure that we're going to keep these first responders and public safety officials viable for their entire twenty-five year career, I think is really important.
Okay. Do you want to say anything about the school resource officers in this, either one of you?
Yeah, and Ronnie's going to have to help me out on this. According to my quick calculations, looking at last year's budget to this year's, it looks like it's an increase of eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars.
It's the same, you have it burdened, it seems like a full, big increase because it's fully burdened in the police department, then we have offsetting revenue on the other side from the school department, just so people know.
If I can just jump in, um, in years past, it's always been a wash. We pay the officers, the school department reimburses us. This year for the first time, I said to Steve, I would like it if we could include, you can budget the expense and budget the revenue, it makes our reports cleaner. So you'll see that we've budgeted a hundred and three thousand for employee benefits and insurance to fund two police officers, um, with overtime is about two hundred thousand dollars. So fully burdened cost for two SROs is three hundred and four thousand. In return, the school department reimburses us a hundred and seventy-five student days, which is roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Therefore, the net to the city is about a hundred and five thousand. So that's why we wanted to bring up the SROs this year on this budget, just because you'll see the expense and the revenue that haven't previously been budgeted.
Everybody knows it's basically the same numbers, but she, it's, she has an income and an expense rather than, okay, this is what we're paying, the school's paying the rest. We show it clearly, the income and expense. Yes, Council of Transportation?
I have two, two questions. Uh, one, I would like you to educate just the everyday taxpayer on why we need to, um, replace the body armor. I understand that, but people really need to understand that. And the second one you have down here, use of two old ATVs. And I'm questioning because we have a, a side-by-side. So if you can clear up those two, and that, that's all I have. So if you can clear up those two, and that's all I have for you, so thank you.
Sure. The body armor is rated and it is approved by a governing authority. And it's rated for five years. Will it last longer than five years? Most likely. However, that is the stamp. It's like expiration date on your milk. When it hits the expiration date and you continue to drink that milk, if you get sick, well, that's on you. So for body armor, it's a five-year expiration date. We're on a system where the professional development officer, which is Tim Stroud, he used to be the deputy chief not that long ago. He implemented a plan where instead of incurring these costs all at once, we are in a rotation period. So we replace ten vests a year, every year. It makes it more palatable in a budget to just replace a smaller amount over the course. So I think my body armor expires this year. And when that gets replaced, I'll be good for five years. But after that, it'll be somebody else's and somebody else's in groups of increments of... It's either five or 10. I think it's either five or 10. And then one year, we have a year to catch up with. If that makes sense. As far as the ATVs, I'm really not familiar with... We have those two old ATVs. They're like seventeen years old. If you're asking what we're doing with those? Yeah, I'm really not sure what's on here. There's no expense to it. They're all paid for. They've been paid for for many years. In fact, we got them through a grant.
I think that came up in a conversation about having a yard sale.
Okay.
Parks and Recs should expect this conversation.
Yeah, so we were looking at, are there assets that we own as a community that have some residual value and we're not using that we could recoup, you know, X, Y dollars for and remove storage space or some such thing?
Yeah, it's quite possible that we could sell those on municipal bid for a cost. And I don't know what a seventeen-year-old ATV would go for. Somebody else may have a better idea.
I'm not sure. It's a conversation about a huge income stream. It's like, well, the conversation started with all the junk that Parks and Recs keeps down at Goodell Park. Sorry, all the old, like, mower beds and all that stuff. And it's, you know, why don't we ever clean house? And then, of course, your ATVs came up as well. So that's how the conversation started.
They do run? They're four wheels, yeah, still, exactly. They're not quite that old. They do still run. We did maintain them. We keep them maintained. And we could utilize them in a limited capacity. Our concern was is that they weren't reliable. We found out they were breaking down more often. And so when we talked about having the trails and the trail committee and when we have capacity for officers to conduct enforcement on the trails, they'll be using the side-by-side. Because that's why we acquired the side-by-side so that it would be a reliable form of UTV ATV as opposed to somewhat unreliable. So that's where that's at. If that answers your question.
The only thing I'm going to say is Allison was asking about ATV... Keeping an eye on the ATVs down at the airport this morning. I think the only way to be able to do that to some degree is to have something too. So I guess it's a conversation for every department to think about, you know, having unused equipment that you just don't want to deal with getting rid of. I think we want to start clearing up some of the...
Yeah, or finding uses within the city. Like, we think we did that with one of our trailers. We had an enclosed trailer. We put it out to the rest of the city. Can any of the department utilize this?
I want people to become hoarders. No hoarders. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I think I have the shortest slide of the night, so I think I win.
Maybe, I don't know. Legal was pretty short, too.
Cookie for you.
So cookies for me. So I currently have twenty dispatchers. Two of those are trainees. I'm supposed to have twenty-two. We have interviews tomorrow, so we'll see what happens there. We are always in a knife fight with the other dispatch centers in the state for help, which is what drives our personnel costs, unfortunately. Bitterford just upped the yanny, let you know that, significantly. So we'll see how that goes in the next couple of months. If I have anybody who thinks the grass is greener in Bitterford, I always hope that we don't, but I usually lose that. My budget didn't go up a lot this year. The only big line item that went up was my training because I figured I'd just factor in the training for dispatchers because I always have to train. And I didn't have it in the budget previously. So rather than getting beat by Ronnie for all year, I'll just get beat for part of the year. I'm sorry, Ronnie. So that's why that one line item is up, the training line item. The CAD system, that's the big question mark. Nobody can answer right now until we get a RFP out that the county is going to get out and we get some bids back. We won't know even what fiscal year we're talking about. I'm thinking we're probably talking late 2025, possibly 2026 for the CAD. But that's a semi-educated guess, so...
And that's going through the county, correct?
We are going...
We discussed that today.
Yes, we decided that if we did a county-wide RFP, one, we'd get everybody in the county on the same CAD, which lends to being interoperable with the rest of the county and hopefully get a better price because they're, you know... If you get everybody in the county, then that's a big contract for whoever gets it. And that they should be bidding as low as they can to get that contract.
Because that would talk about Bitterford and York.
We're talking Bitterford, York, five different standalone dispatches, us. So, yeah, it's a pretty sizable contract that they'd be talking about.
Okay.
All right?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Bill tonight on his budget? No?
The CAD system is going to be most likely on 25, 26 budget?
I'm guessing late 25 or 26 is where they... With that many dispatch centers going into the same CAD, they can't do it all at once. So it would be a phased implementation. I would guess it would take two to three years to do that. So I think we'd have a little bit of wiggle room in deciding what fiscal year we want to take the plunge. I believe. I believe.
Yeah, just want to take the opportunity while Bill's here. So in today's public safety presentation, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the work environment and the difference. So, you know, you just mentioned that Bitterford's throwing money.
Bitterford is currently down five. They are throwing large money at this problem.
Isn't Portland doing the same?
Portland is about fifty percent manned. They just hired a... I don't know if it's public yet, so I won't say. But they did hire somebody to fill their dispatch director position. We'll see how that goes. But statewide, dispatch is manned around seventy percent still. It's been that way since the last two to three years. It's... We do all fight for the same resource. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of people that come into the dispatch world that stay. And we have a lot of revolving doors. I have probably twelve people that I've had since I've been here, twelve years. And I've got eight people that are the constant shirking folks. So... And that's how it is throughout the nation. It's just how that... It is a tough profession, you know? My people are scheduled for twelve hours. They typically work a sixteen if somebody calls out. Working sixteen with Adolf and coming back for another sixteen and doing that again is hard on your life.
So I bring it up because, you know, the city council has backed and made the investments for the appropriate, you know, market analysis that you're paying competitive benefits package, competitive wages and such under that. And that's reflective. We can see that in two line items, the benefits and wages in this year's budget. It's... That's the number. That's where it's at. So we're competitive, but their presentation today focused on the work environment. All of our departments are working on the work environment because your greatest asset for recruitment is the people that are manning the department. If they talk positively about it, that brings in other dispatchers or other employees. So I know, like, our police department's down two officers. Bitterford's down fifteen. Fire Department's down one officer. Bitterford's down eleven. And we've already talked about dispatch. So money, just money doesn't solve the issue, so...
It's those snacks, Steve.
It's the snacks.
It is the snacks.
I think he might make them pancakes too or something, too, so...
French toast.
French toast, thank you.
French toast is where it's at.
I've heard.
One quick question.
Yes.
So I see you have two openings and two current trainees. So if you end up having... If you're able to fill those two openings, would that allow you to adjust your schedule so that people aren't doing twelve-hour shifts?
They... The twelve-hour shifts are actually part of our contract. We have tried to change that the last few contract negotiations, and they voted to maintain the twelve. As long as we're staffed, they like having three and a half days off.
Okay.
Because that's how that works.
All right, so that's...
They work Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Wednesday's a short day, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So having half the week off is what they voted on having.
Okay, so that's their preference?
It would help with the sixteen-hour days, though, wouldn't it?
I would think so.
Yes. But what they fear is five sixteen-hour days. That's always the discussion.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that... Those changes might help with the turnover, but it sounds like that's...
If I could shorten the hours in a week, I would be... That would be good.
Yeah, that's been a constant discussion. For as long as we're maintaining staffing levels, that's a very favorable work schedule. It's when we drop below eighteen that is not a favorable schedule.
All set?
Okay.
Sir? Yes, sir?
So the Fire Department, and I'm going to consider, just so you know, and I'll let Steve decide if he lets some people go home, but I'm going to consider a break after the Fire Department of at least ten minutes so people can stretch their legs and stuff. And I know you've all been here a long time, but I need to stretch my legs a little bit.
And get cookies.
And get cookies and stuff that Ann brought. I kind of like making sure we have all the public safety together. Thank you. The Maltese cross, okay. I know, it's huge font, which is perfect for Ann.
I like their big font. This is great.
So do I. But the airport has a special font that leaves dots out in between that saves ink. Just saying. Yeah, you do, because I never know which side I'm supposed to be reading. But anyways, I've seen this before. Oh, no, wait, it's the other side.
Well, thank you. This is, you know, being here for ten months and doing my first budget piece, so I'm excited.
Yay!
The first two pages, just informational.
Okay, on the Maltese cross. I'll read it later. I'll be interested to read it later.
Again, yep, it's always something that's different. So I did a very high level of what we do, and then I'll go into really the changes that we have. The Sanford Fire Department is a combination fire and ambulance department. All the full-time members are cross-trained to handle either fire or EMS responsibilities. By doing this, the citizens of Sanford enjoy top-quality service all out of one department. In 2023, there were eleven hundred and ninety-two fire rescue calls and thirty-two hundred and fifty-four EMS calls and over six thousand hours of training time. Did a chart on the paper, so you have a three-year comparison of where the Fire Department has gone and what they've done. As statistics show, fire calls have been consistent in the past, and ambulance calls swing higher, eight percent increase over the last two years. Many of the calls are overlapping, meaning two or more units, fire or ambulance, are being used out of the stations at the same time. With that being said, it's very important to have available trained personnel to provide the needed fire and EMS coverage for our citizens at all times. We stay current in the latest technology and in the process of becoming a pilot city for a new program, only increasing our field capabilities and giving our citizens the highest quality service available. We'll be having a hearing for that on the 21st with the Medical Practice Board. So more to come. The department has applied for the state to increase our service license to advanced-level care from a basic level. And we're pretty close to being able to finish that up. That's been an ongoing process that I was really excited to do. We have the capabilities to do that. All the department members train on firefighting emergency medical services, confined space, rescue hazardous materials incidents, and countless other classes, including mandatory departmental labor standards. In order for the department to operate, we must have very dedicated caring personnel, supportive city government, and citizenship. This city of Sanford has superior quality personnel and a very supportive community. The Fire Department operating budget submitted in a draft is a nine percent increase from last year, operationally. The increase is mostly due to wages and benefits. The rest of the budget was kept static, except for the known increases to product or services. Larger items are listed out below. So, yep, I'm that guy. There's really four positions, two line firefighter positions, which I'll talk about going through, one community paramedic and one training educator that we're asking for. The community paramedic, I will go more in depth on that position. But it's... Right now, it's a grant-funded position. And it should be an expense on one side and reimbursement on the other. The fire educator position, pretty strong feelings for that. We don't have anybody going to the schools anymore. A lot of questions come out. It would be nice to have that. The piece with the fire educator is it was going to be partially paid for or half-paid for by the county as a shared position. The rest of the funds that we would be using would be the part that was left over from the fire marshal's position that was defunded last year. So being creative and trying to get those community ties, that would line up with the county, them funding half the position for us. And the staffing for the two firefighters. So in our current model right now, we have two shifts at twelve, two shifts at thirteen. And it would be really great to have all the shifts serving at the same. I know where we are this year. I wouldn't be doing the citizens or the department justice if I didn't ask for these two other positions. The two positions would allow for a more effective response, especially in the Springville district, where that's the first district we rob from if we have a shortage in a day, to bring them to Central, just to be able to have that response out of Central. And in the case of a cardiac emergency or car accidents, which I'm finding in my ten months here are incredibly prevalent. I've seen more car accidents in ten months than I did in my years, twenty years of service in care. So I can just tell you that that's huge. Right now, central station, out of central station responses out of central station have a fifty-two percent ROS rate, which is gets the patient's heart start beating again. That's return of spontaneous circulation. Out of the Springville, we have a seven percent. And that's not due to the providers. That's due to the hands that it takes to revive somebody in the case of a cardiac emergency. And again, those two extra positions were shortened due to the retirement. That's three shifts that generally go with a four-person crew in Springville unless we're fully staffed that day, which there's always something that goes around. There's a lot of moving parts to this machine. So it'd be nice to have that constant of that house fully staffed. Again, knowing the constraints of this year, but I wouldn't be doing the citizens' justice if I didn't sit here and ask to have those two positions filled up. Yes? We're not backfilling those. No, they're just... They're not staffed, so there's no mechanism to backfill that.
The contract has a provision that they can do one less than what full staff is. And since full staff is twelve in that particular shift or that particular location, it's one down, right? And then he also...
Sets the minimum staff.
It's kind of, but you also have discretion also based on the contract, so, yep.
I'm going to save that. So the community paramedic, a little bit about that. One of the very first things I was asked of about when I came here, I don't see it being anything but a benefit to this community, being a benefit to the mental health unit and being a benefit to the county. I don't see it being anything but a benefit to this, this community, being a benefit to the mental health unit and being a benefit to the county. The community paramedic program is, is designed with the intent to support the community's specific needs, not currently being met by other sources within the healthcare system currently in place. The city of Sanford has an estimated population that exceeds 22,000 and we have a whole varying type of population groups. There's elderly, unhoused, which is common everywhere. It's just how we deal with it. And, and homeless that choose to be. One of the goals to pro, to the project is increase access to healthcare without the system becoming strained for healthcare providers and get the paramedic-level care into homes without adding additional strain to the 911 system currently being used for this. I can tell you right now, the slips, trips and falls in this area are incredibly high. Elderly fall patients are, are.
So one of the reasons I love the idea of community paramedicine, so just to give, everybody knows what I do, but I work with elderly and I have my tenants. So last, not this past Friday, the Friday before, it was me, because I'm involved with my tenants, who spoke with the doctor for one of my tenants who would have been at risk of falling, of falling. She had had a PT person in there, she had a social worker in there, both of whom had communicated either with me or with the doctor. Doctor contacted me and say, hey, I'm going to fight to get her a bed up in Bitterford. Can you get her to ER? Make sure she doesn't say no. And that's, I, I'm assuming what a community paramedicine person would, like try to prevent those falls, try to be like noticing what's happening. So I noticed what, I noticed what was happening. I had just visited her, so I was concerned.
So it's two sides. We need a referral. We're just not going to be going knocking on doors. And we, and we need a referral from a healthcare provider. Right now, there's so many people that are homebound, they can't get to those appointments. They were seen at the hospital, they can't get back to a follow-up for a dressing change, a, a wound cleaning. They go home with wound vax on and have to go back and have them taken care of. They, they don't have those capabilities. They don't have rides. They, they don't have the, the support staff. 20 years, 20 years ago, people lived and kids took care of their parents and there, there was a whole bunch of different things, community. Now it's very mobile, very, I live here, my family lives there. And, and for lack of better terms, they're, I don't mean it in a negative way, they're just stranded. They, they just, they're in a, their own home. That's a retirement home. There's a lot of stress in the ERs. They were pummeled just like EMS or any, any, anybody really during COVID. There's not the staff and they're seeing the repeat patient and we're seeing the same person over and over and over. And there's just no one to, there's not enough home healthcare nurses or, or home healthcare projects to take care of that.
Gaps choose from when a person is, somebody realizes the risk and getting the services in place too.
This way, we need a few things for this to work. We have to have a different medical director. We're, we're not, it's new, it's, it's young, it's, it's getting out there into the system. So not everybody's doing this. Would be one of the first fire-based EMS services doing this in this part of the state.
I in some ways liken it to what the police department's doing on the mental health, you know, trying to address the needs of what's causing, you know, the constant issues they're having with a particular client. And you're seeing the same thing. You're repetitive visits because the underlying issue is not being addressed.
Absolutely. They, they will, they will call 911, they'll call the dispatch for something that they don't know, don't need to go to the ER for, but they need taken care of. This would be that avenue that these appointments, this, this person would be able to go into their home, take care of that need without them having to call, tie up an ambulance, tie up another crew and get in and, and take care of right at their house. This is direct, this, this would just be like a, for the lack of better terms, a home healthcare nurse going in to take care of direct needs that the hospital has sent somebody back into the community with, that they need follow-up on.
And potentially with the hope of setting them up with more permanent services and being to, able to exit and deal with other people, I would assume.
Yep, if they have a, if they have some sort of wound back on or they need some sort of wound care, you're going to be seeing that patient for a, a little period of time anyways, and then you probably be able to move on from, from that.
Isn't there the potential to, if they, they have avoided setting up services that, because there are wound-back services. Why wouldn't they have set it up with the hospital?
There's just not enough people to take care of all the needs that are in the communities. This.
And you can see, I think we somewhat understand and somewhat, especially the need for this position, so.
Yep, we needed a few things. We needed partnership in order to do this with somebody that would do the referrals and, and we have that in place. Chief Smith's worked very hard and very continuously on this and we actually have like three or four doctors that want to like, you go do this, you go do this. We have the job description in place. We're waiting on some things there and then hopefully go out and bring this person in. Like I said, we do have grants to offset that.
And do you have, you said you, we're going to lease a, a vehicle. Do we have all that?
Nope, sorry. I, I, I.
Thanks.
I was getting there. So we applied for a grant from the government in order to, to get a vehicle for this. We, we, we didn't, we didn't get that grant. We have priced out, we're going to need two, two things. Generally, we're going to need a vehicle to be able to do the home visits, nothing big flashy and fancy. And we're going to need a monitor. We are, this is paramedic-level care in, in the home. We, we, we will be checking them out, so we will need to get another monitor. We've been beating them up. I love talking to salespeople. I've been working very hard on that, but we will need to purchase those two things. I believe we have found funding, grant funding for that. It isn't secured as of right yet, but I want to make sure that those are in here in our capital plan moving forward because those are our needs to make this program move, move forward. But it, it looks like we, we might be able to have some additional funding for that. And that's, I put that in here. The capital costs that I have listed are, are basically for the vehicle and the monitor and whatever equipment they might need. Most of the specialty equipment, well, all the specialty equipment that they will need will come from whoever's sending us on the referral because we don't carry wound care things, we don't carry wound care vax. That'll have to come directly from them. There are two LDs in place. There's LD 1751. That one maximizes federal funding for supportive EMS, which will actually be a, a return. So every patient we see will be able to bill for that through, through insurance and there'll be a mechanism for that. And this has got a lot of traction. I don't see this going much longer before it passes. The other LD that's in place right now is 1515, which is an act to fund EMS delivery, which puts us at 200% of Medicare rates. That one's got a ton of traction too, that, that one. There's all kinds of LDs. These are the two that I'm watching. I think a lot will fall off once these two pass because everyone saw what was happening in the actual reimbursement rates. I have a great class to give you folks afterwards about the reimbursement rates that are out there and all the services that have, that have closed. They, they have, it has been brought to their attention that rates haven't gone up. The last rate change from the federal government was in 2011. I know you know from home costs that everything's gone up around you, so it's.
So these two LDs are all for right now?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're pushing hard. If you look them up and you have to look at them at, under the 131st legislature.
Chief, a question for you, keeping in mind the current budget situation that we're in. And I heard you say that five-letter word that we love hearing, grant, which would be lovely. But in, without that being a known outcome at this point, would we have an opportunity in looking to try to make this, get this program off the ground? Because it does feel important, I think, to a lot of us in conversations we've had. Could we look at repurposing the prior fire marshal's truck temporarily at least as an option for having a vehicle? I realize it's not optimal in terms of storage and access to equipment, but is there a possibility of using that in lieu of a current $43,000 expenditure if it isn't grant-funded?
I'm working hard to get it grant-funded. A pickup for this type of thing really isn't. You'll have to look at all the equipment that has to be plugged in, charged and ready to go. It's the same equipment that would be in an ambulance, a monitor, thermometer. And, and we went small, going with an Explorer-type SUV, just something to be able to get around, trying to look at doing outside contracts with it. The big push is going to be the monitor. Monitors are expensive. We got a price on a new one. I'm beating him up, trying to get a price on a demo one.
And we don't have a SUV in the fleet that we could switch out for. I'm just trying to think out of the box.
Yeah, and that, that's, I tried to look at a van, one of the transport vans, because you can get those like a really good price. They don't make them anymore. You can get what they have on the lot, but they're discontinued, so.
I noticed the, the rec department van hasn't been driven in a while. Could we borrow that?
The good thing about the Explorers is they come with the inverters and everything that we need to plug, plug the equipment and keep it charged. That, that was the only piece to that, but we're working on an avenue for that.
And just to be clear, Steve, currently you have the CIP for $100,000 with the offsetting revenue and we do not have the position funded, correct?
Let's, let's, let's examine that. So first, the department applied for an AFG grant for the vehicle and the apparatus. That was unsuccessful. They also applied for a SAFER grant the third time for the, to fund the positions, the firefighter medics. That was unsuccessful. Relevant to the vehicle. So right now, we're allocating, the department received $100,000 state grant towards the, the community paramedic position. Looking at, so I'm going to look at the opera funds and I'm going to look at the, that state grant at the same time. So if we use that state grant, we could use that to buy the vehicle and equip it with, with the defibrillator. But you're not indicating that there's a separate grant for the defibrillator, correct?
Yes, there, we've, we've found it.
Okay.
Yep.
Hold, hold on to that then. So the, the opera funds, you know, we have $300,000 that previously was directed in there towards a revolving loan fund program to help with, with a certain category of housing. That has not been utilized to date. The demand does not seem to be there. So you'd referenced earlier, you know, the second licensed clinical social worker. You could pull half, half of that down towards that position and use the other half towards the community paramedic position. So, right, I'm, I'm looking at Bob because you're my fiscal cliff guy, right? So I wouldn't have a solution for you for year two for that second licensed clinical social worker, but for year two with the community paramedicine position, you have the ability to apply for the same $100,000 for the grant, again, for the state. We'd be one of two in the entire state up and running, so chances are really good there. And when these two bills pass, that position actually will make a profit for us. It will actually produce a profit to help offset other costs within the department, so.
And fiscal year?
So that's why I'm, I'm looking at Bob about fiscal, I'm not worried about the fiscal cliff year two because there'll be revenue there. It's, it's the startup cost of year one.
So '25, '26.
I just want to provide you justification for not using that housing money. There were some reservations originally with using it for that fund. It was $300,000. I've tried to sell it and, and spend it, spend it, revolve it, but with not any luck. And I think the message that we're getting back is that those with capital and access to capital don't need the money and it really muddies the water. I've also reviewed this with Diane Geary. I have another fund for rehab that we got a main housing grant. It's $150,000. I have a full mortgage package built out for that and we've used that for the Housing Authority and on, on some projects and I have one currently going. And Housing Authority has funds in addition to that. It's really for the small-scale project. Once you're getting into much larger housing projects, it's a, it's a whole different ball of wax.
So Diane, small, doesn't feel concerned about, I mean, she doesn't feel like those funds are helpful at this point?
That's right.
Thank you.
Good money in housing right now. There's not a lot of need for it right now. Okay, okay, chief.
Okay, so the next thing would, that I would have on here would be the ambulance replacement. We already have, it's a, a regular payment due on what's there.
Ordering for the next one so that it will come when we actually need it?
So that, that's the, the piece. Everything I talked to you about now is very futuristic. An ambulance is, I can't get a straight answer, 14 to 24 months. And they tell you anywhere's in between. The escalator in the ambulance is a chassis cost. If you order it upfront and pay for the chassis, that makes your cost pretty static. You just have to sit back and wait. All ambulances are coming in about the same dollar value. When I first started in this, ambulances were about 100 and a quarter. When I first started buying them as a fire chief, they were 158,000 and now they've gone up to 400,000. And that's pretty static across the board for what we're looking at, what's, what's out there. It's a chassis cost. COVID brought all the chassis up. So that's what they use to hold, hold the price is, is that piece. So that, that's what I asked for in CIP. I maybe be able to get it for a little bit less. I needed a placeholder to be able to order a chassis to get an ambulance in two years.
That's, that's a reoccurring theme. The police department had the same issue with replacing the frontline vehicles. So now we're going to a single source that has, what, 600 or so on the lot and pulling them from there because ordering them is 18 to 24 months and then the whole program from a timing perspective is shot, so.
So is that the, I think you've covered everything. I flipped right through there.
Yep.
Okay, so any other questions?
I only have one more.
You do.
So, yep, I have one more. So the, the lease on the engines. The city of Sanford went on a seven-year lease purchase agreement for the
Okay.
engines in order to keep the escalating costs of repairs down. We're looking at four years to get an engine. I happen to be here any time. Those are coming due. In fiscal year '27, '28, they're, they're done their lease, both of them. So one, a balloon payment will be due. The other one, a final lease payment and a balloon payment will be due in the same year. I don't know how that happened in the, in the purchasing. They really couldn't give me a good answer either, but that's where we are. If we order new, new vehicles, it's four years. We're not looking at buying anything. It has nothing to do, but I have to put it on your radar. If we look to do the same thing, status quo, just do the lease, we don't own these balloon payments. We won't have to pay these. We pay the last lease payment. One of them would be in '25, '26 would be the last lease payment. And then the next one, it would be '27, '28, and then you would just pick up for the new, new lease. The only recommendation I would have would be to get rid of the old engine. Actually make the one-time balloon payment in fiscal year '27, '28 and '165, '164. Replace old engine four with one of the newer ones and then lease the two. There are some discounts if you order two at a time. These are both up at the same time. So that would be the only thing that I would want counsel to think about. Not single sourcing them. I'm going to look at whatever we can look at, carrying our spec forward and maybe we can do better with another company. But they are looking at about four years on, on these engines.
All right.
The two engines were two years apart. There was a delay even back then. There was a delay in getting the second one manufactured. So by the time it hit here and we took the leases out, they, they were, ended up in the same calendar year. So they're both going out at the same time. That program has been very successful. Again, it's tantamount to the program changes that we did with the police department. They used to take the frontline vehicles, roll it out, hand it back to admin and the the very expensive repair work that you wanted to avoid by taking them off the front line, you end up incurring it, right? The front ends, the brakes, transmission, all of that fun stuff, you end up incurring it. So they're leasing six vehicles for what they use to spend on maintenance on those hand, hand-me-down units. Now, as far as the fire engines, the analysis was run years ago on, on these that the, when you look at firefighting apparatuses, it's year eight and above that you start incurring. Year eight is a very important juncture in the, in the lifespan of these. Year eight is a very important juncture in the, in the lifespan of these vehicles where you start getting into pumps and other major units and other expenditures beyond that point in time. So beginning, turning them back at year seven and starting over again on a lease program is actually more cost-effective than, than keeping them longer term. Our other apparatus for that department, when it first started, we had $3.5 million worth of apparatus that was beyond its useful life. We've taken that out of the fleet. A lot of that was by doing, changing the type and number of apparatus. The quints came in, replacing two units for one and such under that. And then we stepped up our game and did short-term lease purchases on a, for what might be a 20-year asset, paying that off in, in seven to eight years, or as many as 10, but paying for it in half of its useful life. So that was the goal. Then that was going to free up resources, as it has now, to get us into the lease program. So we, we've been a dozen years chipping away, chipping away, chipping away to get to the point to be able to afford the type of number, type and number of apparatus within the department, so.
Steve, that being said, when we look at that ambulance, the new ambulance, so on here as ambulance one, lease payment $100,000, we feel like to keep the course, so to speak, which sounds like a high importance from our fleet management, it's really important, like that's not something we could push to a future, to next calendar year.
No, if, if you don't purchase your chassis now and get it in alignment, by the time we need to roll one of our three ambulances out, there, there won't be a replacement. I've seen this in years past where we bought multiple chassis ahead of time when they were going to change the cab to, to wheel length on our lifetime, so we had lifetime boxes. We couldn't remount, but we bought chassis so we could remount them again and such under that, so.
And just so my notes are correct, you referenced the balloon, the balloon payment and lease renewal. Is that engine one and new engine three?
Yeah, the, both, I'm sorry, both, both of those balloon payments. So one balloon payment would have to be made, the other one would not. We'd just turn the truck in, so we would make the last lease payment, and that balloon payment would go away. When the new truck was delivered, there wouldn't be another balloon payment.
Okay.
And again, that's from this source. Might be able to do better on, on a different source once we start talking with them.
Yeah, if we're just doing a rolling lease, then we should try to avoid some kind of balloon payment at the end.
And you wouldn't. The only problem, the only thing that I can see is engine four is past its, its life. Pump's got issues. It's already been replaced and rebuilt. We would take one of these for that cost. We would get rid of engine four, put this engine in reserve, and, and then we would have the two front lines, and then turn one of these back in, so we'd avoid one of the balloon payments.
Okay. Any other questions? Chief Susie. Okay, so I'm looking at, you know, time, and we're, we've still got public works, which is always fun, which is a big CIP conversation. So does everybody want a little bit of a break? Keep it tight. Everybody's here. I want to be, you know, cognizant of their time. Everybody, please have a suite, because Ann brought them, and she likes to give away sweets. But let's take, let's try to keep it to five minutes if we can, and then we'll get right back here. And Matt, you're up next, I think, right? No, Alex is up next. Alex, yeah, okay.
Steve?
Um, yeah, so there's. bunch of these out there, and what it is, it's all, it's all.
Right.
And I have a lot of different. There's, there's another one that's going on.
Bangs, bruises, paths, scrapes. Yep, yep, yep. Good. Got them all. Good.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
House Society.
No, hang on.
Great.
Ask.
Oh, this is beautiful.
That's right.
No one's funding it.
Don't make it more.
One day.
Hey.
Well.
I'm sorry.
But I'm all, I'm asking a lot.
People.
I guess.
Probably mine.
Two for Albert.
I've been waiting.
It's hot water in here. What are the?
I mean, there's a book with four, I just.
Hey, I'm watching.
What?
It's, well, what?
Well.
I just think it's kind of a general official.
Butter.
I guess I get to be the bearer of bad news. I was supposed to make sure. With hearts. We're not going to do that. So a quick conversation with the city manager. We're going to definitely drop the final four, and we're going to have a discussion of revenues at a separate time. This is mostly for the city council. So we didn't have revenues on this agenda anyway, but it would be nice for us to understand the revenues from, which Steve, I think, can do without having all the department heads come in. There's been a glancing blow on revenues, but we'll have a little bit more discussion and do the final four things at a separate meeting so that we're not here too, too late. Okay? Let's get through, let's get through the departments so that they don't have to do this again. Although, you know, we could have a warrant committee and then city council. Okay. Alex, you're up.
Okay, so Steve asked me to talk about a couple of things. First is, just to give you kind of a quick overview of what emergency management does. We exist to prepare for, coordinate the response to, and recovery from disasters, and to mitigate their effects. This is accomplished through the development of emergency action plans, activating the Emergency Operations Center for significant disaster events, disseminating information, operating shelters when necessary, and supporting the city's logistical requirements. Emergency management also coordinates with the county and state EMAs and manages FEMA grants to ensure that we get the maximum cost recovery after disasters. So that's, in a nutshell, that's what we do. And our budget, very little change this year. Our budget provides the stipends for the director and assistant director. It funds training and professional development, provides the radio equipment in the Emergencies Operations Center that allows for communication during events, and limited backup for Sanford Regional Communications if we had a disaster that affected them. Questions?
Okay, guys, 17, short of $18,000, what are the questions? Thank you, Alex. I don't mean to make fun. I know, I know what you do is important.
Thank you.
Now, what they do is important. It's, it's a very low cost for what they do, though. Thank you, Alex, for waiting this entire time. Thank you, Alex, for waiting this entire time. I do appreciate it. Matt? I told Matt we were cutting his entire budget, so.
This will be short.
Well, we're gonna do public protection first? I'm gonna hand that to Ronnie. She's done all the work on this this year.
Public protection is a combination of contract services and electric. Contract services includes a hydrant rental for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the water district. That's showing an increase of forty one thousand dollars. It also includes a hydrant snow removal, and it's thirty six thousand dollars a year. There is no increase. In this budget for the electric services, we're budgeting ninety three thousand, which is an increase this year of forty five thousand. It's really not an increase of forty five thousand. We are transferring twenty five thousand from Public Works and ten thousand, one hundred dollars from Parks. I'll turn this over to Matt Hill, just because he started this conversation with me about moving it out of the operating budgets for Parks and Public Works, and I'll let him explain why.
Correct. So, thank you. Is this on? Thank you. So, basically, this conversation evolved from when the city replaced its streetlights, and the Public Works Department wanted to know who was responsible for what. So, we arranged a meeting between the Finance Department, the Parks and Recreation Department, and ourselves to try to sort out exactly how this was all gonna work because we had overlapping, you know, limits of responsibility. All of a sudden, once we had transferred all these to LED lights, the lights had been purchased for the majority from Central Main Power. So, as Ronnie said, we put all this into one public protection account for the electric utility. And since then, we've been working to basically clarify our boundaries on what's a Parks or Recreation light versus what's a Public Works light. So, both departments are paying out of the same account.
The big increase in this public protection is the hydrants. No, it's, the main PUC allows for them to actually even collect more from us for the hydrants rental protection. It's basically what we have to pay the water district for a pressure charge. Am I correct?
Correct.
There's a formula that the PUC established. I think it goes back to like the late sixties.
Any sprinkler system has to pay essentially the same thing as well.
But, so, we're not charged the full rate that the PUC would like us to be paying. The Sanford Water District has been our partner as far as advocating for us not to pay that. So, we've seen a lower increase over the years. That's kind of the short version of it. At some point, the PUC may stop having a sense of humor about this and force our hand to pay the adamant percentage, but we don't currently at this time. The Public Utilities Commission regulates what they can charge for their water. So, when they put in for rate changes, the PUC looks at that. Public Advocate looks at that as well as part of the review. Basically, the hydrant rental is a surcharge that the city pays towards subsidizing the water system. These are my words. And it's about having the capacity, to meet the capacity that the city would need to fight fires for large events. Absent that, the water district could make an argument that they wouldn't have to have as large and as extensive a service. Many cities over the years have made the argument, hey, we fight fire with foam now. We have better technology. We don't use the volume of water. Therefore, we shouldn't have to pay as much on hydrant fees. And the PUC says, yeah, no, the rate is the rate.
So, Matt, with your three pieces, basically, I'm gonna divide. So, Public Works, DPW part, kind of what is a change there? What it covers, environmental services? And then, since you're such a big part of the CIP, do that as a third piece of it. That would be great.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. All right. So, we've got our first slide, the Public Works Department. It's important to keep in mind that the funding for the operations and maintenance programs for the Department of Public Works is absolutely like the most critical thing we do. If we don't maintain these capital investments, which I'm gonna talk about later, those will quickly backslide and the roads will go backwards much faster than we intend them to. This was communicated to the council and the planning board several years ago when we started this strategy of investments in the roads. Sometimes controversial, sometimes where it looked like we were, you know, doing a minor treatment to a road that was in pretty good shape and not addressing a road that was really in bad shape. And that's gonna, I'm gonna go over the roadway conditions graph here in a minute, which will kind of explain that strategy. But, we're continuing to build on that strategy through our, really, our operations and maintenance programs first. The operations and maintenance, the boots on the ground are the most critical. It's our team doing the plowing, the crack sealing, the ditching, the brush clearing, things like that, that really keep the pavement in good shape. Keeps the sun on the road in the winter, for instance, stops shading, prevents problems. So, what you see on the screen there right now is a pavement condition index curve where at the beginning, when you resurface or while you reconstruct a road, you've got excellent pavement conditions, and as time goes by, that pavement condition starts to drop. And you have an opportunity with those kind of like shark fins at the top there to do preventative and routine maintenance to the road in order to keep it in good shape. You basically keep the water out of your road base. You seal up the surface of the road, and you can spend a dollar up there. Whereas, if you let that road get into bad shape, you let the water infiltrate into the base, you let the freeze thaw action take hold of the road, it quickly descends on that pavement condition index down the curve, and you spend up, you know, six to ten dollars, six to ten times the amount of investment that you need to just keep that road in good shape up top. So, that's why I continuously, you know, advocate for that. Operations and maintenance is absolutely the most critical thing we do. It's also something that we've continuously pledged to Main Department of Transportation. Our operations group works hand in hand with Main DOT's operations group. We meet with them on an annual basis when their three-year work plan comes out. And we have a very good working relationship. And Main DOT knows a dollar spent in Sanford is a good investment because we're responsible stewards of the city, so.
And a lot of the road work that we do within-house is in the DPW budget? Like, the staff that we need and the plowing and the sand that we use and the salt that we use and...
Correct. Yeah. That's all built into...
That's all the maintenance pieces are in the DPW budget versus the CIP?
Majority, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Let's see here. So, go to the next slide here. So, within the department, we have several divisions. And the largest of those divisions is the Highway Division. Those are the crew that's actually performing this work that we're talking about. So, I sat down with the deputy director and our working foreman in the Highway Division and came up with the matrix that you see in front of you. Basically, I know it's hard to see, but the programs on the leftmost column are our core operations program. So, we've got street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, potholes, tree trimming and cutting, brush clearing, shoulder leveling, which is making sure that, you know, when your tire goes off the side of the road, that the rest of the car doesn't. Street sign maintenance, gravel road grading, roadside ditching, drainage repairs, roadside mowing, maintenance of our own yard, which is essentially an active gravel pit, preventative maintenance, storm response, which includes winter storm response, miscellaneous complaints, and then covering other divisions within our department. So, in this matrix, you basically have each of those programs and how many hours we'd like to spend on each of those programs in any given, a week in any given month. That's then multiplied by the number of employees required to perform each of those tasks. So, street sweeping, it's only one operator, so it's one person. Say, shoulder leveling, that's a much bigger operation with several trucks, either a dump truck or a front-end loader with a shoulder leveling machine. So, that operation actually takes six people, you know. And then, all the way up to storm response, which is all hands on deck. So, based on the analysis here, we have twenty five thousand hours within our core maintenance responsibilities that we need to fulfill every year if we were to keep up with the roads. Then, down on the bottom, it has our current staffing within the Highway Division, which has, you know, previously been addressed during the Human Resources presentation. So, we've currently got eight. There's a little asterisk on that, that we do have two seasonals right now. So, basically, it shows you in the matrix that we're essentially ten thousand hours short on our routine maintenance responsibilities on an annual basis. So, that's what we're up against. And what I've done in this spreadsheet, I've made it an iterative spreadsheet. So, if you increase the number of staffing, it actually increases the number of hours that the department needs to function because, say, you know, you have that plowing event. It is all hands on deck. So, if we have eight people, all eight of those people are in. But, if you have ten or thirteen people, all those people are in too. So, the total number of required hours actually goes up. So, in the iterative process, it actually shows that, you know, our sweet spot is around sixteen people within the Highway Division. We're currently staffed for thirteen, which includes those vacancies. So, we're not proposing to add any of those additional people at this time.
You have to fill the other ones first.
We understand where we're at with the budget. Yep.
It's hard enough to fill the base, isn't it?
But, I also wanted to build a strong presentation on why we need to defend those positions, get them hired, and get that work being accomplished within the city.
So, do you find that the CDL class that they're using the airport for, have you grabbed anybody after that class or...?
So, we've been working on establishing our own class.
Okay.
And we have been, so, there's two aspects to that class. There's an online classroom time, which a lot of our operators have now completed. And then, there's the drive time, which we've been struggling with, frankly. We have one Class A operator who did volunteer to train others, but his duties keep him occupied for most of his day, and he's not, unfortunately, as interested in overtime as we thought. So, we've been working with the city manager and the Human Resources Director to take one of our seasonal positions and turn it to an on-call CDL trainer position, which is essentially somebody who's had their CDL for at least two years and is capable of sitting in the passenger seat and letting those people who are training for their CDL get drive time.
Well, I spoke to, I rented to a new maider, a young man, twenty-seven years old. He's planning to take a CDL class in March, and I cheered him on because I know that there's so many people who need CDL drivers. He already has, I don't know if he had an international license or a main license or how he had a license, but he was able to go into the CDL class.
Please send them our way.
Well, I can send them your way, or your VA person can send, because he's still in that phase. But, he's already got a plan, so, and I thought the CDL was a wise choice. I encouraged him, so.
And regarding department staffing, as you know and has been discussed, it's an issue across the board within our field right now. I will say, in the nine years I've been here, I don't think morale's been any better for the condition we're in. We're down so many people. These guys are putting in long hours for very basic storms. We're down roots and roots and roots. But, morale is high. Like, they're seeing all this investment in the roads. They're seeing people are finally paying attention. So, even though we continue to struggle with the staffing issues, you know, morale is pretty good because we're there to support them now, I think. And they're starting to support themselves, frankly. We've made a lot of good investments in the facilities, you know. It's obvious that we care.
Does this lead into a good roadway CIP since they're interconnected?
Yes. Yep. So, let's transition to the roadway CIP program. So, back when we started our latest strategy, we were around, I think it was just over one point two million, which is budgeted into the city charter at the time. I think it maybe was up to one point five. We did a pavement conditions index and found that we needed to actually ramp that up to essentially four million dollars annually to try to get the pavement conditions index up to a score from sixty-nine up to an arbitrary, I think it was eighty. So, we made a brave choice at the time to not only start ramping up that capital improvement program, but also to do a six-point-two-million-dollar bond, which happened to coincide with the first year of the pandemic. Pavement prices bottomed out, traffic bottomed out, and we got a ton of work done in 2020. So, it was just amazing what we were able to do. And, you know, we've raised our pavement condition index in five years from a sixty-nine to a seventy-four. We've also been able to take that capital improvement program funding and leverage it in partnership with Main DOT, the Federal Highway Administration, and US DOT to draw an additional funding. So, to match what we've invested so far, we're now basically programmed to draw thirty-six-point-seven-five additional million dollars into the community.
So, as you're saying this, so, obviously, one of the conversations we've had early on is, would slowing the ramp impact your work? So, factor, if you could mix that into the conversation?
Absolutely. So, I keep a five-year capital improvement roadway budget. I try to keep it updated all the time, and every time I finish it, it's out of date. But, because things are just constantly changing. But, if we were to, you know, skip that ramp for this year, there would be some projects that would fall out of it. But, I do feel that we could keep our commitments as far as our grant committed funds. So, you know, I can rattle those off if you want me to right now, but...
So, what if it's not the entire five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
If you could keep some for your grants, is there a number of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand? And then, there's three-hundred-and-fifty that could be used for budget reduction or...?
Skipping the ramp, we could still meet our grant requirements, is what I'm saying.
You're talking maintenance and other, like, pack sealing, no?
Nope. This is just additional roads that, and I hesitate to kind of mention them because there's streets that have been put off for years and years.
One that goes down in front of my house.
I doubt it.
All my neighbors, yeah.
I doubt it.
Vote for me, yeah.
I think, I think a written, a written list is fine. You don't have to mention them all here, but a written list that we can look at.
That's a hint, by the way.
I hesitate to give you like a line item veto on this, but it is what it is.
No, I think, unfortunately, as you know, which is why I was teasing you earlier, there are pieces of your budget that have some flexibility that if we can work with it, we might be able to lessen what's happening this year.
Yeah.
So, just tell me, I think what you just did, we can pull the five hundred thousand dollars of the ramp up and not this year, and not in any way drastically affect the outlaying of the pavement programs, grant programs, and not get too far behind. I mean, we're looking at maintenance when all the roads are fixed, for instance, and that's what that five million is for. And not disturb that ultimate goal of having enough to, you know, maybe you can never have enough for maintenance, but...
I will give you my 2025 sheet, and you can see the roads that are programmed on there that I say, like, we might not have to do those roads this year. And then, you can go visit those roads and make a decision. Are they really necessary?
I live on Summer Street. Is that on the list or...?
I can't make any comments.
Well, we'll obviously have conversations around this because stopping something that we've gotten used to versus maybe reconfiguring how we're doing it and adding a couple extra years because to add that five hundred back in next year would be difficult. So, dropping it all out and then trying to add it back in, that's another whole problem. We're just pushing off a problem, so...
Might be why we don't want to take the whole five hundred thousand.
And that's kind of what I started off with, like, the decision not to rebuild the street that's in turning into gravel is a very difficult decision. It's a painful decision, but ultimately, you have to cut that before you cut the maintenance on it. You gotta take the street that you rebuilt two years ago or three years ago and crack seal it. Just have to. And the people that are on that brand-new street, they're saying, oh, I got crack sealed this year. And, you know, people that are on their road that's turning to gravel kind of will throw up their hands. But, that's a difficult choice.
Slowing the ramp, that we may have to slow the ramp.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to bring you a derivation that you cut that ramp in half to two-fifty. So, you build, so, instead of a half million this year and a half million next, that gets you to the four million. It would take you, you know, four years from now to get to the four million. But, it's more palatable than an absolute cut because come the subsequent year, yes, you're gonna be at risk of not meeting your matches anymore.
And not having the matching funds for grants or something like that, yeah?
And that, I think, really to the spirit of the intent of what we were all trying to do here. We were trying to invest in the infrastructure to try to draw, you know, this reinvestment, the revitalization into Sanford. If that's not coming quite as fast as, you know, we'd hoped, which I think it's, you know, talk to the planning department, you know, it's coming. But, it's... you know, it's, it's coming. Um, but it's, it's not a terrible strategy to just slow it down to try to match like.
Well, and also the world has changed since, since we put that into the charter 20 years ago, I think it is now. I mean, the world has changed and we bonded for the roads and we, we've done other things. And that piece of change right now is not as critical to the overall project as maybe it will be 10 years from now, uh, when we need to have that.
Things you'll see us cringe on is you saw us, you know, the mental health officer, you know, we, we understand the, the benefit and we understand the benefit of community medicine or paramedicine. Um, and this is one of those things. It's like we, you know, we invested, we made a plan and we don't want to pull back on a plan that's showing a reward to the community. So it, you know, as you can see, we're picking out some of those things. We know a lot of the other stuff is very important as well, but you know, when you're making that much of an effort to improve a situation through trying different methods and investing in ourselves, we're not thrilled about having to do this. We wanted to get that ramp up and we know we had to go further as well.
I think part of the examination, I can't remember when the six and a half million dollar bond falls off. Is that?
Yeah.
Don't ask questions on the.
I told you earlier today, Ronnie, when I didn't know what to answer, I was going to give you a blank stare. I just, that, that was the stare. So, um, yeah, but if you, if you slow the ramp and then look at when that, that debt service falls off, you may be able to get yourself to a similar place here in the near future. So.
We'll have a, we'll have a fire department then, Steve.
Slow this ramp, ramp up by 250 years ago, the cost of loss is supposed to help and something like that.
We're, uh, we're just talking about roadway, roadway capital. There, there is. There is one position that's funded by the roadway CIP, which is the inspection, but, uh, that's not one I'd propose to cut. Um, you know, that, I can't really talk enough about how important like construction inspection is. Um, to give you an example, I've, I've gone and reconstructed two roads in Springvale that, uh, we were wondering why they prematurely failed and they only ever had an inch of payment placed on them because nobody was watching. So.
I think one of the important parts about our roadway project is, is not just our local dollars that's, that's meeting the mark for us. It's the federal and state money that's coming in. So many years ago, when, when Matt was hired, one of the first things I asked him to do was that the city didn't have an appropriate, uh, relationship with Maine Department of Transportation. So not only has Matt developed that relationship, but, um, we're being looked at and we're being studied. So we hit the first VPI. That's a model now that the state is using. DECD is coming here at the end of the month to say, hey, what, what is it that you've been doing here? Because they're trying to measure the economic impacts of the investments in the roadways that we've been making in partnership with Maine MDOT. And for every MPI that Matt has pegged, I don't know, four or five in the last number of years, that's $650,000 of non-local dollars that's gone into our shared responsibilities of roadway. So I just want to, you know, put that acknowledgement out there that we, as far as the leverage funding, he, he's tapping it in, in every location that we can get our hands on it. So.
And I, I think the secret to our success really has just been listening and just being responsible advocates for Sanford. You know, that's, that's all Maine DOT wants. They, they want to come to Sanford and have people that are interested in, in working with them. And that's what we've been providing.
2031 is our last payment on that bond.
How old I'll be by then?
It was a thought.
Okay. So the non, let's talk about the non-road CIP a little bit before we move on to environmental services.
Can I, can I do one more thing on the roadway CIP? Just, um, one thing that's in there right now that we haven't really touched on yet is the SS4A, which is the Safe Streets For All, uh, where we're developing the action plan. Uh, if we do end up getting like a viable project out of that action plan, that's going to be instead of a 50-50 split, which would be usually what we'd be doing with, with the state, that's an 80-20. So they, it's, it's probably much more competitive, but it's also a much higher cost share.
So, um, as far as equipment, the garage lift, just a brief overview and then we're going to move on to environmental services.
Great. So the, the garage lift is, is essentially right sizing the equipment that we have, uh, for our fleet. We are, uh, getting more like medium duty trucks now. Basically this winter is a perfect example of that unfortunately, where we're just not seeing, you know, the snowfall that we expected. So, uh, it's also a product of those, uh, six and 10 wheel trucks being just very expensive and very difficult to order. Very similar conversation that you guys just had up here with the fire department and, and with the police department, they're one to two years out. We want specialty trucks that have to be manufactured and, and delivered on a timeline and it's very difficult for the industry to do that right now. Uh, our latest strategy is basically we're looking at, uh, a company down, we're looking tomorrow at a company down in Massachusetts who has basically like a plug and plate, uh, chassis and body where you, you know, you have one truck with a, a set dimension for its frame and you can put a dump body on it or you can put a salt shaker on the back or, you know, whatever it needs to have like a more interchangeable fleet. We don't have a lot of experience in this. We've been basically buying one truck at a time and even if those are the same brand of truck between successive years, we're still seeing like a lot of variation. The, the parts are not interchangeable. So, uh, that's just the way, the way the industry is right now. Uh, so yeah, so back to the garage lift. Uh, we currently have a two-post lift in the garage, which is capable of lifting like small duty trucks, uh, and, and administration vehicles. The four-post lift would get, uh, a larger truck on there, um, that would be, you know, lifting like basically like half of our fleet. So we'd have another, you know, get another truck and get more efficiency and flexibility in the garage. As regarding the equipment CIP, um, you know, we have.
Sorry, before you go to the next item, Matt, so the general public understands the ability to lift, um, the remainder of our fleet allows us the ability to do repairs in-house, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
And significant cost savings and time savings, I assume, in being able to do that?
Yes. Uh, you know, I, I don't want to speak for our mechanics or our garage, but it's, it's been kind of a long-term goal of ours to try to, instead of, uh, years ago, we had more of the city's business basically of repairing vehicles in-house. And as other departments' vehicles got more complex, that business went away.
We, we just made a joke about it, but does it lift, lift a fire truck?
Right. So, so we actually have two, we have two sets of lifts right now that would lift a fire truck, but we've been told.
You shouldn't.
I think rightly, well, essentially that, yes.
Leave it to the experts.
Exactly. So.
Those are expensive.
Yeah. The fire trucks basically have, I, I don't, don't quote me on this, but they have a lot of onboard computers that, uh, that we just, you know, we're still working with diagnostic tablets. So, um, but yeah, it's, it's one of our long-term goals to try to get more of the city's business back into the city's garage. So, uh, certainly a four-post lift would help. Is it absolutely necessary? You know, not at this time, but, um, it's, it's one of our.
And we've lost, uh, ma, one of our major outlets that we used to be able to take equipment to, to have repaired, uh, in the private sector is no longer, no longer available to us.
Okay. Is this a good segue over to environmental services?
I've got equipment CIP, just real, real quick. I can summarize it for you.
Okay.
So we, we have a continuous, um, fleet management program with replacement schedules. Uh, did provide it. Uh, I'm not sure if it's in there, your pack or not, but, um, yeah, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind, you can just kind of get a sense of, of what we do. But basically we evaluate the, the vehicles annually or more than annually and see how much longer, how much, what's their lifespan remaining. So we, we basically try to program turnover within the fleet and, um, come up with, you know, a, a number that we need for annual investment in the fleet. We have over $7 million worth of vehicles.
This is something that property sees a few times a year, especially when Matt has found a good deal on a used or.
So, uh, you know, with that size fleet, you try to turn those vehicles over periodically. We have been successfully using municipal bid, uh, through the finance department. We've been rolling that money back into the fleet, uh, when we do make sales and, um, you know, each year it's usually between 800,000 and a million dollars worth of demand and turnover in order to kind of get that sweet spot that was, uh, I believe the police chief was talking about where you have, you're turning vehicles over before they need really drastic repairs. Public works vehicles with plows on them, uh, you don't get to, you know, turn those back in. Those, every time it hits like a manhole cover that's raised up too far, it's like a car accident and it's, it's doing funky things to the frame that our mechanics then have to deal with. Uh, you know, it's, it's difficult to kind of hand those problems off. Um, so it's, those are things that we deal with in-house. So it makes a lot of those traditional programs that maybe other departments can participate in that we're just not eligible for. No, they don't do them in our industry. If they want to do like a lease where we program out or bond vehicles, um, you know, for a period of time, we, we've stayed away from that because we've just felt like, you know, fiscally it's, it's tying your hands and, um, you know, we're trying to operate on a year-to-year basis.
Got it.
Thank you.
Environmental services. Who wants to start this one?
Yeah. Uh, it's really, it's not much different than, uh, the operations and maintenance for the public works department. Honestly, we've, we've got three full-time employees and a, and a summer person. Um, uh, we feel very confident in the leadership we have down there right now, uh, enforcing rules. I think the finance department has noticed that we are, have gotten better about sticking to our prices and rules. And the word is out on the street that you can't, uh, just, you know, walk through the gate at the tran, at the transfer station. So we feel very confident about that. And I think, uh, there's not much else outside of that recommendation from, from the city managers on the budget.
I think one of the things we, on this section, and we don't have to talk about this tonight because this is kind of more part of revenues, but we are discussing, uh, the pay-as-you-throw sleeve price, especially in lieu of the fact that we have several contracts coming up in 2026 for solid waste. So just, I'm going to leave that out there since this has been a long night already. I'd like to continue moving on, but we are having a, we've already discussed having a revenue, yeah, we'll have a revenue conversation about the various revenues from the various departments and pay-as-you-throw is already, uh, we already talked about it. We already talked about whether we're going up enough on a sleeve price because we don't like to necessarily go up every year, whether we should kind of set some sort of formula in place. So we're in that conversation now, just not going to have it tonight because it could go on forever.
It could. And there's, there's a lot to talk about.
Exactly. Especially with the contracts coming up.
All the contracts.
Okay.
Waste, recycling, hauling, automated.
The changing market.
Yep. The trash is getting expensive. That's the, that's the thing I'll throw out to the world. Anne, go ahead.
Uh, just very quickly to be super transparent, Steve and Matt, um, I was, when I'm looking at the numbers, I've been using a $500,000 reduction in our public works CIP. Um, so I would just be curious to look at not the 250 ramp up over four years, but a, a drop in the ramp up to the three, to keep it at 3 million and then going to 250 next year and what that, that impact would be, um, and just have that conversation.
So, so no, no, um, no increase in the roadway CIP for this year and then start the 250?
250 next year.
Is that a very good thing?
No, you, you gotta make up the 250, Pete. You don't put it, or you use it for something else this year and you had to find it next year. So you're, you're already creating a hole for yourself of $250 next year to start with before we don't do anything. So is it a good idea? I don't know. It's, you get your crystal ball out.
It's a difficult budget.
And say, yeah, next year we're going to have tons of money and we're going to be able to fund all these positions everybody wants, plus ramp this back up. And that's the problem with having these bad years. Nobody can do anything about it, but you squeeze and you just have to be careful when you come back next year. You don't oversell it.
Have you found that you own councils are back-to-back bad years or is this just like, I understand this year.
What I, we, yeah, this is, this is more than what Ronnie's ever seen. And, um, she was here and I was here back in 2010, was it? The 2010 budget? And we lost a lot of positions, a lot of positions. And so we're just, I mean, starting to get them back. Um, and we've just gotten them back. So that's 12 years later. We've rebuilt some of these positions back into the budget. So to think of going backwards, cutting important, what we would consider important positions and knowing that it might take 10 years to get them back, it'd almost be better to try to find a different way to be more creative, uh, moving forward so that we can keep status quo as best as possible to get through these bumps. So that's kind of, that's kind of what we're running through our head. But you combine this with the school budget and it's not looking pretty.
And, I mean, in my opinion, I think we're going to get pushed pretty hard to do all 500,000 when we look at it. Cause I, I think 250,000 from the numbers that I spun the last time, it's just going to be a drop in the bucket. We're going to need probably that whole 500,000 plus to get us down to something that might be reasonable. But maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but, uh, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. So I'm sorry, Matt. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Matt.
So, yeah, so if, if next year was at 325, um, I'm sorry, 3, 3.25, that would be 750 short of what I, of what I planned. So again, it would be a kind of like a laundry list of streets and we'd have to go through and figure out where we're going to pull 750 from.
Okay. Parks and Rec.
All right. For recreation, I wanted to start with a statement of our programming. Um, everything's going really well. Um, it's very well attended. We offer pickleball, line dancing, adult basketball, youth basketball and volleyball and childcare during vacation weeks and summer camp. And I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the gym schedule. On a Monday through Friday basis, it's booked 7:30 to 9:00 PM, um, with about an hour gap from 2:30 to 3:30. So it's checkered block full. Um, there's many different organizations that are utilizing it right now. And on the weekends, um, we're booked from roughly 8 to 1:00 PM. Um, and then we have more happening in the evenings as of late with, um, spring sports and stuff starting to ramp up. So just a quick overview. We have no changes to our full-time staff. Um, impacts from minimum wage increase our, we have three positions that qualify for this, um, increase our budget by roughly a thousand dollars. And we would like to increase our pay for part-time positions to stay competitive with the local market. But those could be absorbed, I guess you would call it, through cutting positions that we have not filled in years past. So we've got a couple of summer programs that we haven't run due to low attendance and we can cut those to then offset that, um, money to the bottom line. And for our recreation CIP, we have a little bit more masonry work that needs to be done and then the roof replacement. And we plan to use, um, rec revenue to partially cover these costs. Any questions on the rec side of things?
I had a quick. So in watching the school department budget conversations, I understand that there's been a shift from a part-time, and, and also in our budget, there's been a shift from a part-time staff person under Parks and Rec to the, um, school side. As they described that, um, and I'm just listening obviously, so I don't know the full story, but as they described that, they shared that the school department at one point had purchased a mower. Like there was like an agreement, like the school department buys a mower, you supply the staff. So my question is, in looking at that potential colla, is there a collaboration where we could forego this Ventrack mower deck tractor? And look at, we go, doing their mowing again? Do you know what I mean? Or is that not a, again, thinking out of the box?
Yep. So that's on to parks.
Oh, sorry. I skipped ahead.
No, no problem. So our plan there was we added in a fourth part-time position, um, to this budget to cover the mowing for the school department at the high school. So we, we mow up there roughly 20 to 25 hours per week. So that's pretty much a full-time job. Um, with cutting that position from the budget, the school is then going to maintain their mowing themselves. So that way we can focus on the city parks and facilities, um, outside of mowing, just the high school fields.
And then having to purchase the new tractor mower deck isn't at all related?
It's, it's not related to, um, mowing the high school. This would be to replace the 2005 Jacobson that's, um, at Blue and Field. Um, we purchased the Ventrack mower a couple of years back in hopes to get this new deck because it just comes with different tools that were, were able to use.
Add-on to an existing.
Yep. We, we purchased the mower. So this is just the deck.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, uh, relevant to the mower at, at the high school. So, um, you know, the original agreement was we're going to supply the labor, they're going to supply the mower. The mower that they leased is specific to the high school is so large that we can't pick it and transport it around to use it anywhere else.
Sorry, you can't transport it around?
We can't, we can't transport.
It takes a special license. It's so big with the trailer that goes on. Only a couple of our guys can drive it.
So it stays at the high school, high school only. So we didn't, we didn't get the benefit. Uh, it's been a constant dialogue with the school department. Um, you know, great, great partnering with them and such under that, but none of us can get, can get the labor. So we can't get it any easier than they can get it. So, you know, we, we administratively, we decided to cut the cord. You take care of your facilities, we'll take care of ours. That, that frees up another 25 man-hours. So we cut a part-time position request out, uh, to be able to maintain what we have with, with pre-existing staff.
So that's where we are with Parks and the other, so I explained the mower deck. It's in addition to the tractor we purchased a couple of years ago. And then I have Trail CIP on here as well. We're requesting $5,000 more. That will help benefit the trail system as a whole, especially with the motorized use of the facilities. And this will allow us to hopefully gain some larger matching funds for grants going forward. And I just want to note too that the committee just received $15,000 from the William Oscar and Re Trust. So that's going to also go into the rail trail and also looking at local matching funds to go after larger grant money. It would allow us to have a larger local match, so then we can have more federal dollars. So usually it's like a 20% local match. So if we could add that 5,000 into a match, it gives us more money to play with.
So the 5,000 is actually an increase. So historically, the Trails Committee has been funded at 25,000 per year. There's an explanation in there that, that shows that the overwhelming majority of that amount of funds is taken on just their normal maintenance and they can't do any capital improvements. So the additional 5,000 gets them to a $30,000 request where they can step that up for the capital improvements. The major capital improvement was to address the rail trail from Oak Street to the Lebanon Line this year. And if you ever bite that, it's horrible, right? Because of the very positive public response that we've seen out of the fixes that they did to the rail trail since the non-motorized, motorized was taken off. The other aspect, so staff is looking at the potential. So in the, in the overall realm of our tax increment financing book, Keith is working on extending two, two TIFs so we can reassign resources there. And just in your downtown TIFF alone, Aaron McMahon will make the last payment on Heritage Drive out of that downtown TIFF. That's $190,000. That previously was going to that, the finance of the Heritage, Heritage Road, Heritage Drive. That being said, we believe that Trails is one of those aspects in the development program. So we may be able to fund that $30,000, put a $30,000 offset to the capital program if you allocate it, offset that with tax increment financing revenue as opposed to general fund. So that's, that's, that's just come up in the last number of days, so.
And then Steve, remind us on the, there's a notation on the gym roof CIP. Were we looking at using special funds for that? Remind me what that.
Yeah, I think we, right now we have $130,000 offset from the rec department special revenue. So that's, that's revenues that they derive from their programming fees that Ronnie has saved away, knowing that the city was going to take on the Memorial Gym at some point in time. So in those years where budgets were good, there were good retained earnings on the organization. Those funds were not depleted, they were kept in reserve, waiting for the acquisition of Memorial Gym, so.
But, and those numbers are already in here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I know. Yeah, yeah. No, they're not, hey!
Okay, further questions for Brady? Thank you, Brady.
Thank you.
I know everybody who's late, I feel bad.
Alex?
Okay.
Your turn.
Yeah, I'm back with municipal facilities. You can see our staffing level. We have a director, two full-time custodians and two part-time. We provide the custodial services for the City Hall and Annex, the police station, the highway garage and Public Works Office Building and Memorial Gym with that staff. One of those positions was the part-time janitor that was in the rec department that got moved over to facilities. And we did that to try to be consistent so that all of the custodial positions all report into the same department.
So the increase isn't your fault?
So, beg your pardon?
The increase isn't your fault?
Yes, it's something like that, right. And then the other thing that Steve wanted me to talk about was the, the CIP. The biggest, the biggest thing that we have in the CIP for, for this year is the restoration of the fire escapes on the City Hall and Annex building. And it's about a $50,000 project. They are in rough shape and do need to be worked on, so.
Yes, we've all been told not to go out that way.
As an aside, should there be any signage or anything, you know, like no exit this way or something? Or in case of emergency?
Better than burning in a fire.
Use the front door or something, so. You know what I'm saying? Should there be any kind of signage until that's brought up to, I just.
It certainly wouldn't hurt. I, I just need to be careful about how it's worded because they are officially still a means of egress. And so we can't say, don't, don't go out this door, right?
So that's, that's it?
That's different than was kind of my understanding. They're probably in a little bit better shape than what I'm thinking they are. So I'll take all that back.
Okay.
Sorry, is this already on?
General Assistance.
Yes. So as a couple of previous directors, this is also my first year being involved with the budget, so bear with me here. Currently, the General Assistance Office is staffed with myself, the director and one part-time caseworker who works typically 7:30 to 12:30, Monday through Thursday. Due to the current and much anticipated future workload, we are asking to have, I think I put assistant there, but it's going to be a full-time caseworker, not an assistant. So I think I typed that wrong. So we are looking at, like I said, bringing the department to myself, the director, one full-time caseworker and keep the current part-time caseworker. The couple of different reasons for this is right now, again, due to the volume that we have, I'm not really keeping up on the director's work. I'm, I'm just doing GA cases, phone calls, scheduling that. I'm squeezing in my other stuff, but it's, it's after all the applications, I guess, then. So the reason that we are looking to keep the part-timer is due to the new mainer population. Our part-time caseworker, for people that don't know, can speak four different languages. So the need to keep him would save from having to have a about $40,000 a year interpreter service. And like I said, he's built great relationships with them. So our hope is he will continue to work with them, so we don't need that interpreter service. Another big thing would be to bring on someone else is that currently, if we have someone out sick, vacations, training, state trainings, if it happens in the afternoon, I have to close the office because he's not there, I got to go to him, the GA office gets closed. So we're not there, obviously, when we need people to be there. And then I just kind of bulleted one that I didn't have there is not that I have ever personally felt, but security, again, I'm in the office from about 12:00 to 5:30 by myself. So again, nothing's ever happened, but who knows? So we are, like I said, just requesting to hire on a new, one new full-time caseworker just to the, the workload's not going to change. We've got a lot of new mainers coming in, a lot of people moving to Stanford.
They say we're nice.
What's that?
That's what Franklin told me, that we're nice.
Oh, he was nice. We try, we try to be. Yeah, it's just the workload is, I've been here about five years between GA and the city clerk's office. And we've, even though the workload is increasing hugely, we've always just kept one director and one part-timer. And it's not going to be sustainable much longer to do that. Like I said, we're just basically doing applications, phones, scheduling. I can't work on anything that I want to try to build with like outside relationships or anything like that. Or like I said, training, state audits, Steve, that we're going to get ready for soon.
Yeah, let me talk about state audits. They better be polite when they come here, so I just, because I've told them that upfront. So, so we've had one and a half, for the years that I've been working here, we've had one and a half positions. That was okay in the first number of years that I was here, but pre-COVID, pre, pre-asylum seekers, it was dropping off. The, the director's ability to timely file for state reimbursement, keep up with the record-keeping, reconcile slips coming back in for food vouchers and stuff like that, it was dropping off precipitously. And, and our former director was very astute, very good at what he did, very efficient. So that being said, when we were taking on a whole new clientele of new mainers, it has been very daunting, they're very time-consuming cases. And we're typically managing something in excess of 40 families right now.
Took on six more.
Oh, yeah. So you see that number is not dropping off from, from the original, right?
Yeah. We took four this week, two are coming next week. And then we already know that two more are coming in March.
Well, six people or six families?
Families. One family is the size of seven.
So when we, when we look at, so I'm starting to wonder about these numbers that we have in here now. But we'll, we'll, we'll circle back to that before we get those cut in stone. But back to the, to the workload, we've been in crisis mode for far too long down there. When any, when any one person steps to the side for a vacation, an outage or whatever, that illness, we've been in crisis mode. So just trying to avoid that. I think our money's far better spent instead of paying 40, almost $40,000 for interpretive services, services which are absolutely necessary, to take those less than that, the 25,000 of that and put it into that retaining the part-time position for interpretive services on a spot-call basis and yet have those man-hours available to us. So that's, this is the only part two that I put in there and I kept in there knowingly. And I made that known to you because I support the need of it that drastically. That, that the department has been understaffed for far too long. I think Ronnie, because she's been here so long, can remember doing GA when you had four people on staff. Before new mainers were, were present. And I don't even know what it means when they start talking about the refugees that they want to bring in. A certain number, like 75,000 by 2030 or something like that. So it's daunting, it's daunting.
And I'll echo like Steve said, the applications for the new mainers just due to simply what you're required to have with their immigration documents. You get to follow if they have this type of immigration, you need blah, 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 blah. It's, it takes a long time to do these applications now to ensure that you have what the state needs you to have so that you can get reimbursed for that case.
In reality, it makes no sense to be running all of this through GA. That's, that's, that's what it comes down to, that's what it comes down to.
And, and I have asked specifically to DHHS that it's time for a statewide database. The amount of time that the physicians spend just researching a case because there's not, the, the state has not allowed there to be a statewide database out there. So they have to call to see if they're first-time applicants, if it's truly a first-time applicant. Many times it's not, they've been elsewhere before and they're shopping, right? So the time, just the time of verifying those facts and such have been horrendous. So, and, and the needing to respond within 24 hours and such into that. So that was my earlier reference when the state, when we were absolutely at wits' end with the volume that was hitting us. And I was calling DHHS and they told me, well, you know, you only have 24 hours. I said, hang on, I'm putting you on notice, you're going to become part of that intake. Well, we don't have the staff for that, they told me. That was a difficult conversation, so, yeah.
And we do have to schedule time this year because you're, the volume that we do, you are supposed to get audited no more than once in every three years. We haven't been audited since I was hired as the part-time caseworker. So we're hitting five years that Sanford has not been audited. It's coming sometime this year, so I need to get the office ready for that.
Okay.
More is like, nothing's happening here.
Health officer's been eliminated is because it's under the fire department. There, that's the update on the health officer.
Allison, what did you do wrong to be last?
Best for last? Is this recorded? Because you're going to make the mayor watch the entire thing, right?
Oh yeah, she'll watch it.
Except she'll get to drink bourbon while she watches it.
Okay, yes, no wonder you hate her. All right. So the airport, our staff is three and a half total positions. We have one 20-hour a week. We were doing seasonal, so we would hire somebody for helping with plowing. And then they'd have to be gone for a certain amount of time and then it was typically the same person. We'd hire them back again. So we've been successful in now retaining that person. We have him year-round, 20 hours a week now, which is excellent and, and huge, huge for the department to be able to do that, even though it took a whole lot of work through HR and administration. So I really appreciate that. Just to give a little bit of history of where, where we've gone and how we've gotten to the place that we're at, which is, is a very good, secure place budget-wise. When I first started, the airport had been underneath different departments at different times. So throughout history, the airport employees would, and it was a much less busy airport, much less developed. So we were helped, they were doing street signs, we were plowing roads. We were helping with some things with Parks and Rec. So slowly, as the airport has grown over the last 10 years or so, we've pulled back from some of those things and they're in the departments where, where they should be and helping with mowing, things like that. So now that we have the solar project and we're making a significant amount of revenue off of the maintenance of that, we're, the amount of personnel that we're at is perfect for the amount of work that we're doing. So we're pretty much maxed out all year-round and it's set up very well. I'm the only administrative person for the entire department, which works fine for now. But I can see, looking forward, that there could be a time, especially as the airport continues to develop because, I mean, I'm the one who gets the mail, answers the phone, writes the leases, sends out all the invoices, handles all the personnel stuff, all of it. So I would see, looking forward, not, we're not there yet, we're not even there, maybe three years, something like that, trying to get somebody, maybe we do an intern first, see how it goes. So just to keep that in mind. So we are financially self-sufficient year over year. Every time there's development at the airport and we're following that business plan that you guys approved, whenever there's development, it has a lot of multipliers without necessarily adding to the service burden. So for instance, the hangar that got built last year, that's several single-family homes, but no single family. The one that's getting built this year, same thing as far as just straight-up property tax revenue. That's not the fuel flowage, the land lease, all the other stuff that goes to the airport. So it's mutually beneficial in that way. What I want to think about also, looking forward, is where we do have that little chunk of money that's in the black, squirreling it if we can. I know this year is not a year to start doing that, but the money that we make off fuel sales, we own the fuel farm, that's a million dollars when that thing goes. We don't have any money set aside for that. So we got to start building these things. Same thing with all of the equipment that we use to mow the solar farm. That's going to need to get replaced eventually. That's all built in to the money that we charge them, but we're not saving any of it. So just want you to be aware of that, looking forward. This year is not the year I get it. Just let me think. As far as CIP, I didn't put that on there, I don't think. But for CIP, we have a small, I think it's $9,000 or so for clearing the approach to Runway Seven. We're starting to have the trees grow up so that they're not being able to just be spot-cleared anymore. We need to hire somebody to come in and do some patch mowing with bigger equipment. And that, and the gunner system. Yep, so those two things relatively, you know, on the whole of the budget, pretty small, pretty small potatoes. The other thing too is utilities. The only big adjustment to our budget this year was just being honest about how much electricity costs. That was a big, a big change. I think when I started 10 years ago, it was 10, $12,000 a year for electric. This past year, we budgeted 18,000. And next year, to be realistic, we're going to need 28,000. And our usage is the same. So it's just, you just can't, can't ignore it anymore. So what we've been doing is having some pretty easy winters and we haven't gone over budget. So we've been covering it. We'll be able to do that again this year, it looks like. But next year, we need to be, need to be honest about how much the electricity costs. So that's the difference in that. But other than that, our budget is mostly, it's mostly payroll. We're a pretty efficient, pretty efficient department as far as that goes.
Do we have any other questions about Allison's budget? This is pretty cut and dry.
We need to cut those pilots off of night flying, just, you know, make that runway dark, just lit all the time.
Every other light.
There we go, just undo.
So, when I first started, we had a 20-hour-a-week, part-time airport director, and Sherry Lord, my executive assistant, was.
That's right.
Was assigned to support the airport as well.
And that was after Evan. You weren't here for Evan.
No, I wasn't here for Evan.
He was part-time too, right?
Who was the general? Dana. Yes, Dana. That's who I started with.
So, the manager was actually part-time as well?
Yeah, when I started, I was 30 hours a week.
Okay.
Yep.
So, yeah, she's already moved into the full-time position, so now it's the next phase is an assistant, I guess. Yes, that airport's changed a lot in 20 years. Okay. So, I think we're going to reserve, is everybody feeling the same way I am, that we need to reserve? And a lot of this is more further conversations with Steve about some of the things we wanted to talk about, so I don't think it needs an entire staff to ruin the rest of their evening, which is already ruined. Sorry about that. Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say, myself, extremely informative, it's been a long time since we've done a process like this. I think it helps going into the budget, it'll, it'll allow us to have different types of conversations during the budget part, when we're merging the school and the municipality together. We're not gonna have to, have, we're, hopefully, we'll not have to have a learning curve. That's the goal. So, anybody else have any comments about tonight's meeting? No? And Steve and I will work on a, and the mayor, who should be back, I think she's here for our Thursday meeting. Yeah, so we'll work on how to fit in the rest of this conversation, which, as you know, is, we, the council stipend, we'll get, that should be pretty quick. Opioid settlement funds and how they're being used and how they might be used, ARPA funds and the use of the undesigned, which would be, you know, do we use more, do we use less, do we stay pat? And then probably a revenue discussion, looking at the various departments and how those are going and where there might be the opportunity to have other revenues, so. Bob?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to all the department heads and, and others that spent the evening here with us. Long, long evening, probably for you guys sitting, listening to, to us for several hours here. And it's much appreciated for you to take the time. And as you've heard, it's, it's been real informative to us and, you know, who knows where this is gonna end up. But at least, excuse me, as a council, we go into this like I like to say with our eyes open, so we know what, what the value is to this particular aspect of the budget or the, or the other. So, thanks.
Yes.
Just very briefly, so the council knows, I intend to email you a PDF of last night's school department slide deck. If you haven't seen it, they've been working exceptionally hard at reducing their initial budget. They are, obviously, nothing's finalized, but last night, they talked about cutting programs, cutting positions, and, you know, certainly a very difficult process they're going through. So, I'll shoot that out to everybody as well.[1774.33]